Julie, are you there?
Good evening. Nice to hear the the sound of people gathering and communicating. Thank you all for making it out this evening. I call this November fifteenth Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissions to Order. Commissioner Quesada is appearing by Zoom. I wanted to give a bit of a roadmap as your chair. Good evening, you know, I was, given that we have a packed agenda, I want to give a bit of a roadmap for my intention for tonight's meeting. We'll start this evening with the regular Bernaleo County Commission Administrative Meeting, and then proceed on to the Senate District Twenty-Six appointment. I scheduled the appointment of the Senate District Twenty-Six for the end of this meeting to be respectful of the time of staff and members of the public who had an agenda item on tonight's regular meeting. So we're gonna respect and get that business done. And then we will hold, just for everybody's information, we'll be holding two separate public comment periods. One for the general items in the, in the, in our administrative meeting, and second for the Senate appointment when that is, when that item is up. So, thank you for your patience. Thank you for being civically engaged in attending your Bernaleo County Commission meeting. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by myself. Thank you. On to item number three, Madam County Manager. Are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. There are no changes or additions to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item number four, Proclamations. And I'm very excited. I'm gonna move on to item four, Proclamations. I'm gonna ask that Commissioner Chair Benson start with his acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we've got a director who's retiring. And I'm honored to be the one to acknowledge him. Mr. Richard Clark, thank you for coming down. So, Mr. Richard A. Clark, acknowledging, Richard A. Clark Jr. is the Director of the Bernaleo County Department of Energy Emergency Management, and acknowledging Clark is responsible for the development of the County Training and Exercise Program, for development and updating of the County Emergency Operations Plan, the mitigation plans, the threat and hazard identification and risk assessment, the shelter plan, and other operational plans needed to support the citizens of the county. And acknowledging, prior to leading Bernaleo County Emergency Management, Clark worked for the state in various capacities to include New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management as the Chief of the Intelligence and Security Bureau, Secretary of Homeland Security, and Secretary of the Department of Public Safety. He also oversaw the New Mexico All Source Intelligence Center, the Critical Infrastructure Programs, the Hazardous Material Program, and the Radiological and Nuclear Program. And acknowledging, Clark is a graduate of the United States Army War College, the Command and General Staff College, the Combined Arms Service Staff School, and the New Mexico Military Institute. Clark has an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice, a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration, and a Master's Degree in Strategic Studies, and is a decorated veteran of the US Army National Guard after twenty-seven years of active duty service. And acknowledging, Richard A. Clark is retiring from Bernaleo County and will forever be remembered as an honored leader, respected and appreciated colleague, a person who cared deeply for others and is a respected and valued friend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners recognizes, acknowledges, and honors the leadership and dedication of Richard A. Clark Jr. to the citizens of Bernaleo County, done this fifteenth day of November, 2022, in Bernaleo County, State of New Mexico, presented this November fifteenth, 2022, by the full Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, thank you so much for this honor. I can't tell you that my career has been, is been full of, of great times and great service. And I, and I, you know, I told somebody the other day, I said, "I think the best thing ever is being a public servant, and being able to support your citizens, be able to support your community and your state, and, in my case, our country." And so, you know, a lot of times, you know, people take that for granted, you know, and all the great things that we've done. You know, we went through a lot in Bernaleo County. And thanks to the leadership, I can't tell you, the leadership of the Commission in, in supporting me, the leadership of County Manager, and, and of course, my Deputy County Manager Greg Pettis. You know, we went through a lot, I think, the Dog Head Fire started off my career up in these mountains. I remember, came in six months, and we were like, "Oh, my gosh, what do we do?" And we, we started working hard on that one. And we got that out of the books, and then, you know, that pesky COVID-19 came around, and we did that for two years, and testing and vaccinating, and, you know, and I tell this story all the time, and I think that one of the greatest things ever was when we were first giving out vaccinations, and, and this elderly lady came up to me, and she said, "Thank you so much. You saved my life." And I said, "Wow, what does that mean?" She goes, "Now I can get back out there. I can see my grandkids. I can do what I need to do." And to me, that is what it's all about. That is what being in this job, that's what it means to, is working with everyone here. And I, I can't tell you all the different departments that were involved in that. It wasn't just me. It was all the departments within the county that were able to do that. And working with the Clerk's Office when it came to trying to make sure that we had safe voting during COVID-19, you know, and all those different things. And so, I couldn't have done it without the great leadership again in the county, the great support from my leadership, and, and I can't thank Chief Pettis enough for what he's, he kinda let me go and pull me back every once in a while, but let me do what I needed to do. But again, I just want to thank everyone, and I'm humbled to, to have been a part of all of this and be part of the county. So, thank you very much for this honor. Appreciate it.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't say just a few words. I will tell you, a lot of the time when somebody leaves an organization, you always talk about filling their shoes. I can tell you right now, we will never fill Richard Clark's shoes. All we will do is carry on his legacy and continue to build on the foundation that he's leaving us with. So, again, from a personal and a professional standpoint, I couldn't thank Richard more for serving as a mentor to me, whether he realizes it or not. It's Skipper and Gilligan together, and we've conquered a whole lot of things. And I'm, I'm gonna miss my friend, both again professionally and, and more importantly personally. But the important thing is that we will always have that friendship and someone I can call when I'm not quite sure what the answer is to something. I know Rich will be a phone call away. So, thank you again, Rich, for everything that you've done for all of the citizens of not just Bernaleo County, but the City of Albuquerque and the State of New Mexico.
Director, I've got a plaque for you. And, and also, you know, one thing that I wasn't able to read out was that you're also a Brigadier General, correct? Retired. And, and also, one of the, one of the, you know, best test movies is when people that you've never met, you meet, and you happen to know the same person, and they speak just as highly of this person as you feel about them. And, and there's no reason for them to. And that's what Richard has gotten from me when I'm out in the community. What you see is what you get. And, and that's a hardworking, professional, loyal, committed individual. So, thank you. Okay. Here's your plaque for you.
Beautiful.
Here's your acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you. You're a servant.
Thank you so much, Richard.
Madam Chair, I have one more acknowledgement if I might?
Yes, and I just wanted to say thank you, Richard Clark, for your service. And I see your passion and commitment and dedication, and thank you. Makes a strong Bernaleo County.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I say a few words to Richard Clark?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I always love when people read your, your experience, your accomplishments, because it blows me away, because I think of you as, as my Richard Clark. You're just so humble, and you're just there. Bernaleo County and throughout the state, I know how hard you worked during the fires this past summer. And I've always said to you, and I believe this in my heart, that no matter what, you will, you will be there to save me if anything happens. You've always been there for me, and I appreciate you so much. And I wish you the best. Very, very best.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pescotti, thank you so much for those kind words. And I've enjoyed my time working with you and making sure that we, we took care of all the citizens up in these mountains to make sure they were ready for fires. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, this individual is trying to kinda sneak away without any, uh, a whole lot of fanfare. But after a stint in the Navy and completing his university education, Lucas DeFoya started with Bernaleo County. On November twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-six, he started in the Bernaleo County Office of Environmental Health as a health inspector, working with small and large businesses and restaurants throughout the county. Lucas was skilled at working with people of all levels of experience and expertise to ensure adherence with health codes and other safety codes. Through his even-tempered, fair-minded, and consistent leadership style, Lucas was promoted into the ranks of management and oversaw the Health Protection Section of the county for many years. Lucas has a reputation throughout the county with businesses and other agencies as being extremely resourceful, accommodating, yet effective, in ensuring that public safety and health regulations are met. To this date, there's not any major issue that has taken place under Lucas's watch. About three years ago, Lucas was asked if he would consider stepping into the role of the Planning and Development Services Department Director. This department is very complex, housing over thirteen ordinances, sector plans, master plans, building codes, over seventy different permit types, field inspectors, zoning hearings, and permitting staff. Lucas agreed, and he stepped in and has done a masterful job of ensuring the continuity of a very complex department, all the while getting us through COVID, a move to a new building, a transition into new permitting software, and even a ransomware attack. One of the most important contributions Lucas has made is ushering in the newly adopted nuisance abatement program and heading up the illegal dumping partnership. These new programs are critical to maintaining the quality of life in Bernaleo County, and we thank you for your exemplary service to Bernaleo County, and we're gonna miss you. Thank you. If you have any words, go ahead.
Well, this was a surprise. Thank you. I did not expect this. I really appreciate, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, the acknowledgement. And, and I'll, I'll just echo what I said earlier, is that we have great leadership here at the county, but we also have great staff. And, and we do, the work that's done is, is, they do the heavy lifting. And, and I've just been very blessed to be a part of that. And I'm, I'm, I'm really just, just honored to be a part of Bernaleo County. It's been a great career for, for me. I feel like my work has been meaningful. And it's been just great opportunities for me throughout my career. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service.
I have a plaque for you.
We have a plaque. Okay, and we're still on proclamations. And I am so excited to be sponsoring this proclamation to recognize PB and J and their fiftieth anniversary. I don't know how, yes, huge. I have so much to say, but I'm gonna read off this beautiful proclamation, and then we're gonna call up my mentor, Angie, and others. So, sponsored, the Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners, sponsored by myself, Commissioner Walt Benson, Debbie O'Malley, Stephen Michael Quesada, and Charlene Pescotti. Whereas PB and J Family Services, originally known as Peanut Butter and Jelly, is celebrating fifty important years of serving New Mexico families. And whereas in nineteen seventy-two, Angie Vachio and Christine Reese founded PB and J Family Services to serve at-risk children in Albuquerque South Valley after realizing how few services were available for young children and their families. And whereas PB and J's programming empowers and assists families in creating and implementing frameworks that lead to improved parent-child relationships, positive parenting practices, optimal child development, family safety, and increased knowledge of and access to community programs and services. And whereas for over fifty years, PB and J has continued to support communities and families where they are, where they are, including in prisons and jails, and responding to the needs of children and families that have emerged in a changing society. And whereas the leadership at PB and J has made an impact at the local and state level by sharing what they have learned from children and families and advocating for policies and legislation that supports their continuing work. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners wishes to acknowledge and congratulate PB and J Family Services for fifty years of outstanding and tireless work, and for being a beacon of hope for thousands of children and their families in time of need. Done this fifteenth day of November, 2022, in Bernaleo County, State of New Mexico. Thank you so much. And I know some folks will want to say some words, but maybe come up and do the picture. And you could say some words. Thank you, Angie. Thank you. Maybe I'll wait till we should have done some words first. If you care to. I think Angie, they'll ask you if you wanna take a picture with us. We'd love it. Thank you.
Just a very, very quick thank you, from the bottom of my heart. This is extremely touching, and it means so much to me, and it will for the whole agency. You know, we were born in the South Valley in nineteen seventy-two. We grew up in the South Valley, hand in hand with Bernaleo County, back in the days with Commissioner Bob, Bob, Bob Hawke, and Dave Mascherinas, and, and Dave Santillanes, and, oh my God. My dear friends, this, the commission has grown. The commission has maintained its wonderfulness, and mostly has maintained its partnership with PB and J through the years. For that, I am grateful. I will be every day of my life, have been every day of my life, and will be before what's left of it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say a few words about PB and J. It's a, it's just really an outstanding organization. It's helped so many families, helped so many children, this fifty years. When I first got on the commission, we looked at a program at MDC that would welcome families, people who wanted to visit the inmates, and create a place for folks to visit. There was no place like that at all, and kids had to wait in the lobby. I think the thing that got me really concerned was apparently a child got their hand stuck in the vending machine because they were trying to get some potato chips or something out there. And I, this is not, it's just, it's not okay. So, we established a, a little area there, and so, and opportunity for folks who access services and for people to visit. So, PB and J is just, you know, they've created a lot of programs. They're open-minded about it. They look at different ways to approach helping families, because there's a lot of healing that needs to take place. There's a lot of trauma that happens with these families. I'm so glad that we have agencies like this that work tirelessly on behalf of the community. And so, I just want to thank you so much for all the work that you do. I know it's been a life's work. It's not easy work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. I wanted to also take a moment just to say thank you. I say my mentor because I was a young new director, and just you opened up so much doors and view into what we can be doing and how to be strong, and really advocate on behalf of our families and communities. So, I thank you personally for that. And as everyone's already said, PB and J is a staple in our communities. I'm thankful that there are services provided in the southeast. I know you provide services to all of our county. But I'm so thankful that also we have a staple there in my district. So, thank you for your years of service to the whole organization. Much gratitude. Great. So, we will move on now to public comment. I wanted to, again, clarify that I'd like to share, we are now moving into the general public comment period. If you're here to give public comment on the appointment for Senate District Twenty-Six, we ask that you hold that public comment until that agenda comes up later in the evening. And so, right now, we'll move into general public comment. Julie Anne, how many do we have signed up to speak? And please call the first name.
Madam Chair, we have eleven speakers for general public comment. When I state your name, I'm sorry, when I call your name, please make your way down to the podium. Before you start your comments, please state your name for the record. And we'll start off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Justin Snyder, followed by Ryan Zamora.
Don Schrader. Sandia Weapons Lab designs US nuclear bombs prepared to mass murder worldwide many hundreds of times more people than this COVID pandemic has killed. US nuclear bombs prepare to slaughter far more moms, dads, kids than all the wars of human history combined. US nuclear bombs prepare to incinerate many times more moms, dads, and kids than Hitler and the Nazis killed in gas ovens, concentration camps, and World War II. US nuclear bombs prepare to murder far more people than all the street gangs, drunk drivers, drug cartels, school shooters, rapists, violent spouses, serial killers, Ku Klux Klan, and mafia combined. Why would anyone with a conscience work at Sandia Weapons Lab? Why would any community leader be proud of Sandia Weapons Lab? A life-giving job at minimum wage is infinitely better than a mass murder job at Sandia Weapons Lab, Lockheed Martin, Los Alamos Weapons Lab, or Kirkland Air Force Base. For forty-three years, I have paid no federal income tax, not one damn bloody penny for US nuclear bombs and US wars. Sadly, very few Albuquerque leaders have the conscience and courage to publicly condemn Sandia Weapons Labs.
Justin Snyder, followed by Ryan Zamora.
Hello, Justin Snyder. I am here to speak today about the largest public finance effort in the history of Bernaleo County that is to be approved tonight. It's sixty-four million dollars that the citizens of Bernaleo County, which is larger than the stadium proposal that recently was shot down, are spending on this effort. The entire effort, it's a TID effort, the vehicle, the public finances, a TID. You guys may know that name from the acronym from Santalina. But this is a far more dangerous TID, as it deals with vertical improvements and an applied improvements and an applicant who is a quasi-private, run-for-private arm of the university. When this TID and a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-million dollars that the entire TID is allocating and calling for, close to one-hundred-and-eighty-million dollars will be used for vertical improvements that will create an office park and parking for that office park that will be run for-profit by the university's for-profit arm of global development and will be leased to private entities. And it will be forever, once dedicated, forever off of the tax rolls, creating a suckhole of taxes and an unfair competitive advantage to, to a non-mission pursuit of the university. I do not understand how this has gotten this far with nobody speaking about this, and I appreciate your insights and consideration on the matter. I do not believe it should be introduced tonight and approved tonight. I believe the community deserves a voice in this action. Thank you.
Ryan Zamora, followed by Carlos Benavides, followed by Dennis Smith.
Hello, my name is Ryan Zamora. A little nervous, so excuse me while I stumble through this. I'm the president of the Burnley County Deputy Sheriff's Association. Behind me is the vice president Santiago Royball and treasurer Samuel Rodriguez, recently promoted to sergeant with our department. Just here to introduce myself and the people standing behind me. I want to apologize to the commissioners. I didn't do this about a year ago. I should have done that. I'm learning my position. It's not something that I've done before, so kind of learning as I go. We're just going to start coming to these meetings to show face and give an update as to where we're headed and where we hope to go with the county. A couple of things I'd like to mention, the things that we've been working on, I feel that anybody that we've spoken to from the county has really offered their support. We have yet to run into a single person that has said they wouldn't support us or wouldn't help us in any way that they can. And I think that that is something we're very appreciative of, and we look forward to keeping those relationships going and establishing new relationships as we go forward. So if there's anything that we can do for you as an association, please let us know. Thank you for your time and nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Benavides, Dennis Smith, Susie Gao.
All right. First, I'd like to say thank you for the green light proclamation you made a few weeks ago. Appreciate it as a veteran myself. And, but I want to talk to everybody here about ignorance of law. There is no ignorance of law for the common citizen out there on the streets, for us, for anybody out here, especially for, for those that are deemed to know the law. There's, there's no excuse for them. But another thing I'd like to say is that if you don't know your rights, you're going to lose your rights. And, and if, and if you don't know your rights, these people are going to tell you what your rights are. And if you guys don't know what our rights are, this guy's going to tell us what our rights are. We have to know what our rights are. We have to know what the Constitution is. That's what the supreme law is. That supreme law is our rights. I just want to remind everybody about that. If there, if there's a law that's contrary to the Constitution, then it's not withstanding. It bears no, no law at all. Not from the date of, of, not from the day branded so in court, but from the day it was, it made, from the day it was enacted, that's the date that it's unlawful. And just want to remind everybody, know your rights. If you don't know them, somebody will tell you what they are. Thank you.
Susie Gao, followed by Marcy May, followed by Gerardo Cionello. Dennis Smith, you've been called. You need to make your way down to the podium when called. Thank you.
Honorable Commissioners, eighteen states are controlled by winning the election in a single county. New Mexico is one of those states. Burnley County is one of those counties. You campaigned and were elected and promised to certify that the elections under your, your oversight were conducted honestly. Many questions exist about the recent elections. New Mexico voter rolls are severely compromised with access given to a platform shared by almost twelve-hundred far-left groups that can directly add registrations without going through the Secretary of State. No, no matter the county, no matter the date, the New Mexico registration record shows the same exact voter registration peaks, merely adjusted for population, on the same dates. Voter registration is, by party, is controlled by a set repeating ratio. There is never a day when Republican registration exceeds Democrat registration. Electronic counting machines are allowed to be used to count the vote in New Mexico if and only if they are certified properly. The printing and tabulation machines in the New Mexico and Burnley County are not properly certified. For example, tabulator system log files show a software mismatch in New Mexico. It's the same software mismatch observed in Antrim County, Pennsylvania, where seven thousand votes were switched to Biden at the expense of Trump. Therefore, the election in Burnley County is fraudulent and must not be certified. We, the people, are promised the right to petition our government for redress of grievances. The Burnley County Commission is who we depend on to keep our elections fair and honest. Serious questions about the integrity of the recent election remain and must be addressed before you can in good conscience certify the election. We pray that you have the integrity and courage to do the right, right by your constituents and withhold certification until a full audit of the election.
Respect the time. Thank you.
And the cast vote record is conducted.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Susie Gao, followed by Marcy May, followed by Gerardo Cionello.
So I'm Susie, and I'd like to share some document with you all. So I'm going to talk a bit about what happens, some issues that we have, we, the people have observed for the midterm election last week. So I want to show everyone in the audience
Madam Chair, point of order. The speaker needs to address the commission only. Thank you.
Okay, so I want to show this plot to everyone in the audience. Okay, if you look at page three on the document that I gave to you. So this data is governor race, and the data plot is a function of time and total number of votes for two governor candidates. And that's through the election night to November ninth. And the data show there's, you know, certain place, a certain time has huge, huge vote injections, vote injection in the plot. And also mysteriously, you know, there's drop in the total of the votes. So can you tell me, can anybody understand why the vote, total number of votes would drop when we really, if we do the counting properly? So that's what I want to say. So please, there's so much manipulation. This, this clearly is digital manipulation at the computer level, at the tabulator level. And I have worked as poll worker and poll challenger through several elections. What I see is that the problem, the, the poll location, I don't see anything very unusual. However, the problem exists at where the, who upload the votes, who counting the votes. There are only two or three people know what, what number to upload the computers. The public have no transparency, there's no transparency to the public what real the numbers are. So if we don't do any hand counting, we never know. So we end up with always trusting computers. Computers tell us what the numbers are, and that's where we get to have those manipulation on those data, those data from Secretary of State's website. This was the real-time data. And so please, I think.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up. Thank you. I'm going to ask people to really respect the time this evening. You have your two minutes as usual, and we ask that you stay on the time.
Thank you so much for your time. My name is Marcy May, and I am here to remind each one of you that you are our public servants. And I talked about that when I ran for the District Twenty-Eight position. And that is something that you need to remember that when it comes to certifying this election, your responsibility is not to Maggie Toulouse Oliver, your responsibility is to us. And we, the people, are the ones who made the votes. We are the ones who paid for the votes. We are the ones who paid for the machines. We're the ones who pay for every single one of your salaries. And I'm here to say, to remind you guys that these anomalies that we are seeing here, because you can see them on the screen over here as well, we, how many times do we hear, oh, that's just third-party mumbo jumbo? Well, we are in twenty twenty-two, and we have the technology, the Secretary of State and Burnley County has the ability to put this out on a recorded timestamp, yet they never do because they don't want us to see the real-time results. I also have another problem with this election. Ms. Maggie Toulouse Oliver allowed the, the Libertarian candidate that ran in the Secretary of State race, who does not have a CFISS report, she does not live in New Mexico as of May fourth of this year. You think that she might have checked that out, but she did not. And that is, that makes this an illegal race. And there are other Libertarian candidates like Ms. Mena Erica Myers, who raised zero dollars, yet got twenty to forty-three thousand votes from voters in New Mexico. Do not certify this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gerardo Cionello, Barbara Baca, Teresa Costantinidis.
And I'm going to ask folks to refrain from clapping. We're trying to keep the commission meeting moving smoothly. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to thank you for serving our Burnley County. And I want to honor that as being our county commissioners. And first off, I just, as your constituents, I want to thank you again for serving. You, you already have the documents with you there. And, and County Commissioner O'Malley, I tried to send you one. I think it got blocked trying to get it to you. So the question I have here, is it true that you were elected and took a note to certify that the elections under your oversight were conducted fairly, honestly, and securely? And we're seeing a lot of the questions and questions about the election process. And I'm, I'm one of those, among those people. So, and that the electronic tabular machines allowed to be used to count the vote in New Mexico, and these machines are not certified. And did you know that the election system and its machines have not been certified since two thousand seventeen? Did you know that according to the election handbook, page one thirty-five, the red book, that the voting system is supposed to be standalone, non-network election system? And so, for example, the software that's not supposed to be in there, or you want to call it modem. And so, and secondly, so there's another question. Did you know that eighteen states are controlled by winning the election in a single county? And Burnley County is the controlling county. And I want to ask you the last question. So would you have the integrity and the courage to do the right thing for your constituents and withhold the certification until a full audit is conducted? I, for one, is a, I'm a first generation. I'm an alternative health doctor from the Philippines. And I got away some of the things that are not good. And that's why I'd like to, from a second generation. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to hear from you again.
Teresa Costantinidis. So each individual item doesn't have comment associated, so your comments would have to be shared now. Is it ordinance? Okay, thank you. So that concludes general public comment.
Thank you, Julie Anne. Thank you for public comment this evening. We will now move to item number six, approval of consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution number for item six E, F, I, J, and O. And ordinance numbers for items K, six K through Q.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item six E, AR twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Six F is AR twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-three. Six I is AR twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-four. Six J is AR twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-five. And six O is FR twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-six. Madam Chair, the two ordinances that I have are actually under item seven.
Okay, okay, under, can you, okay, we'll hold off to get those ordinance. Madam, okay, and so the consent, again, the consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pescotti.
Aye.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboa.
Aye, thank you. That moves the consent agenda on to item number seven. Please provide ordinance numbers for item seven A, B, and resolution number seven B two.
Okay, yes, Madam Chair, for item seven A, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six. For seven B, one, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven. And seven B two, AR twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-seven.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to seven A, amending project revenue, Director Marcos Gonzalez, two percent. Your microphone's off.
Oh, there we go. Madam Chair, members of the commission, the economic development staff recommends authorizing the Burnley County Commission to approve an ordinance on behalf of San Roque Apartments LLC for multifamily housing refunding revenue bonds, which amends and replaces ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two related to this project. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Would you explain this a little bit? This is, and why we are doing this?
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, the county originally issued the housing ordinance for twenty-seven point nine, a million dollars. And this is a workforce housing project that's going to be located off of cours between Blue Water and Los Volcanas. But since then, the cost, the cost of construction has increased. And so now we're increasing the ordinance to thirty, thirty-four point five, a million dollars. And this will be a new hundred and thirty-six unit multifamily housing, a complex that will be a hundred percent affordable.
Marcos, just to public to understand, this bond is payable, this has to be paid by the developer. We are not.
Correct. Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, that's correct.
Okay. Madam Chair, if there are another questions, I'm going to move approval. Madam Chair, if there are another questions, I'm gonna move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Piscotti.
Aye.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah.
Aye, thank you. You have a due pass.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for the record, nobody signed up for the public hearing for this item?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving to item 7B, Keep America Beautiful, Antonio Hara Mio, director, to present.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, again, my name is Antonio Hara Mio, I'm the Director of Operation Maintenance for Bernalillo County within Public Works. We have two motions here today. The first motion is to adopt ordinance to establish the Keep Burn Co. Beautiful Advisory Board. I brought this to commission earlier, this is just reintroducing it after the 38 period for comments. We did not receive any comments, so we hope that staff recommends that this be approved. Again, just to refresh everyone, this is to establishing advisory board, as well as each member of the commission will have someone represented here, is to basically promote education and, education and for illegal dumping, also for recycling. The second motion is to approve, is an AR for the establishment of the Keep Burn Co. Beautiful as an official affiliate to the Keep America Beautiful. This will allow us to have a better framework for a national organization, but also allow us to access additional funding for any initiative relating to, for recycling or any type of that initiative. So we're very excited to do this. Again, staff recommends that we become an official affiliate for that. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions? I do move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Piscotti.
Aye.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move on to item.
Madam Chair, my apologies, just for the record, nobody signed up for the public hearing for this item?
No, no apologies, thank you for catching that, Julianne. Great. So we will now move to item eight, adoption resolution. Commissioner Casada to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, from time to time, many, many times, we have to appoint legislatures when there's, when there's openings. And at this point, Bernalillo County does not have a policy. And as you know, and I've spoken publicly many times, that we cannot have a district unrepresented, not even for a day, in my opinion. And this kinda takes out politics from us being able to appoint, and that we actually have a policy in place to, as, and so I don't know if you've all had a chance to read my resolution, but what it does is, is it starts a process immediately when we get either a letter from the Secretary of State saying that we must fill a position, or we get an official resignation letter from an elected official who is either resigning, or, or any other reason why they would have to vacate or vacate the seat. We have not established that, and this, what it does is just makes it a fair and equitable process for everybody. So nobody can use this as a way to either manipulate or misguide how we move forward as a commission, to do our duty to make sure that, you know, that there's representation always for a district. As you know, when you run for office and you're appointed, there's not a, there's not a hiatus from November 5th to January 1st. You have an elected official who works through all the way to January 1st, and that either they did not run for office or lost their seat, and the next elected person in that seat starts on January 1st. So there's never a gap, there's never, you know, a time when people are not represented. And I think it's imperative as a commission that we put something forward that we all have to adhere to, no matter what. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion?
I move for approval.
Second. Thank you, open discussion. I think I wanna start, I appreciate this, and as I have now participated in five appointment processes during my two years as a commissioner, and many appointments have taken place before that, these appointments have occurred without issue, I feel like it's a little disrespectful to our staff to say that we don't have a process, and we clearly do. I do support measures, though, that make our process more clear, transparent, and accessible, especially to community. So however, I believe the motivation behind this desire change on this agenda tonight is to influence appointment process for the potentially open house seat, if vacated, is created by tonight. So today I took upon myself to speak with both our legal staff and our New Mexico Secretary of State, Maggie Toulouse Oliver. They clarify, both clarified to me that the timing of this appointment falls between election cycles and terms that start in January 2023, as Commissioner Casada mentioned. So there will be, no matter what, this, it feels like this impact of this resolution would be to currently move political processes. So I would respectfully move to defer this item until the December meeting.
Second.
Okay, Madam, any discussion on the request for deferral? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Piscotti.
No.
Commissioner Casada.
No.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
No.
Madam Chair Barboah.
Yes. Okay, that fails. So in addition, I'd like to offer an amendment. If you look to our ordinance, I'd like to offer an amendment under line eight that would amend the ordinance to say, therefore now be it resolved that this ordinance take effect January 1st, 2023.
Second.
And I'd like to just discuss that, right, when, I, again, believe in transparency, and I wanna make this process more clear for our government, we will be forced to make this within three weeks, and I don't think that's been discussed, and I do, I do think that we need the time to discuss that. But also because there's such political clamor around this evening, I think it would just be right for us to put this, this thing that would clearly define our process, more clearly define our process to the January, and would still, to the, you know, to the January meetings.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. First of all, I, I hear you sort of making a foregone conclusion that there's gonna be a vacated legislative House seat, so that, that seems a little off. But I guess the other thing is, this particular appointment process has been so fraught, and I, I guess I have been the target of a lot of this, and so, you know, I am all for supporting this, because I saw how horribly off the rails this particular appointment went for this Senate seat. And it, it's sad for our commission, it's sad for the people who applied, it's sad for our communities to have to go through this. And so I think that the sooner the better, we, we should have had a process in place already. I'm grateful for the appointments that went smoothly, and I just never, ever want this to happen again, what happened with this particular Senate seat. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley?
Well, I guess, I guess I don't have any comment. Thank you. I already seconded, didn't?
Yes, you seconded. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Piscotti. I'm sorry, what are we voting on this time? Is there an amendment that we're voting on?
Yeah, we are voting on the amendment, yes.
And the amendment to defer, to defer, to make the item effective as of January 1st. So you would still have your item, right? You would still have the thing you're wishing.
Yes, I understand.
But it wouldn't start until January 1st.
Thank you, no.
Oh, I wonder why, okay, yes.
Commissioner Casada.
No.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
No.
Madam Chair Barboah.
Yes. That amendment fails, and we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, my apologies, before you call the roll, if we can issue the resolution number?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, for item 8A, AR 2022-128.
Thank you. And now please call the roll.
Commissioner Piscotti.
I vote yes to the resolution as stated, thank you.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
No.
Vice Chair Benson.
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah.
No.
Thank you, you have a due pass. Okay, we will move to item B, responsibilities at public office, ethical code of conduct. Commissioner Piscotti, 2%.
Thank you. I actually take no joy in presenting this resolution. The behavior and the words that were put out last time after immediately following our administrative meeting were deplorable and highly inappropriate. And so you can, you can read the resolution, it references the code of conduct about the kind of behavior that's expected in these chambers, and how that was violated. And it, you know, it breaks my heart, because there were, this behavior happened in front of elected officials, staff, and members of the public in this public space that is financed by taxpayer dollars, it's named in honor of Ken Sanchez, who was the most gracious person ever. And to defile this public space in such a way is abysmal. So I condemn that behavior, I understand that it's hard to speak up against things as they happen, but we know that when we don't speak up about things, things just tend to get worse. And so, you know, I think we all have looked at the state of our politics, and just been, you know, just shocked and saddened at how civil discourse has just gone so downhill. And so I am bringing forth this resolution, because I need to stand up for what I feel is right and proper behavior. And in this space, we can disagree with one another, we can have discussions, but to use foul language, especially gender-specific language, or anything specific to a person's characteristics and demographics, and to use threatening behavior towards subordinate employee of the county, it's just, it's wrong, and it is not only against, it was not only against me that night, it was against everybody here, my assistant, and I feel like the constituents of my district. So I will move to approve this item. Thank you.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, I mean, I certainly understand that Commissioner Piscotti was offended. I'm not so sure the chambers are offended, but that's, that's a pretty far reach. But I understand that she was offended, and I think that, you know, I don't think, I did say that I regretted my confronting Commissioner Piscotti in anger, and I don't, I don't have an excuse, I have a reason, but I don't think it's excusable behavior, so I do wanna apologize to her for that. I'm not going to, I'm named in this, and I'm not going to, I'm gonna recuse myself from this, I think it's, obviously she's asking the commission to weigh in on it, I don't think it's appropriate that I do, since I am the, since I'm named in this particular resolution, so I'm going to abstain from a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. I wanted to make it known, as Chair of the Bernal County Commission, respectful conduct and relationships are very important to me, however, respect is already addressed in our code of conduct. I don't think a restatement of the code of conduct is necessary. The code of conduct is restated in this resolution, calls for resolving disputes between public officials at the lowest level possible. Public censor via resolution does not meet the spirit of the code of conduct, so I won't be supporting this this evening. Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting this, as you know, because I seconded it, and, you know, there's a way we must conduct ourselves. And I'm just gonna say this again publicly, as you all heard in the news, that if it was me who would have stood up and used that word to any of my fellow commissioners, I would not be a commissioner right now. They would have all stood up and protested, and, and demanded, and screamed for my resignation. And for me to be treated possibly differently than any other commissioner is unfair, unethical, and if we have to restate what our policies are, and what we're supposed to be held up to a higher standard, then, then we must. And I guarantee you that I would, you know, that definitely they would have turned on me. And so this is, I still feel this isn't even equitable to what would have happened if I would have stood up and used that language towards a fellow commissioner. So I stand by Commissioner Piscotti, and, and support the fact that nobody deserves to be spoken to in that manner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley?
Yeah, I just wanna state that somehow Commissioner Casada always seems to make it about himself. And he did ask for my resignation, step down, and, and my answer is, of course, is no, I didn't ever got any request to do that as a result of this. This goes on, I mean, I've, I've had, I've been witness to lots of conversations where people have used foul language. I don't make a big deal about it, because I, that's, if we did, my goodness, and everybody knows this, I mean, this goes on, the legislature, this goes on everywhere. Again, I did, you know, I, as I mentioned, I did regret that, I do apologize for it, and, but, you know, this whole idea of, oh, if I did this, I would be asked for my resignation. Well, maybe, because you're a man, I mean, you mentioned that you're a Hispanic man, like, we don't know that, because you mention that often, but, yeah, I, I just, if this is the way the commission wants to go, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. Contrary to what was reported in the Albuquerque Journal, this was not a face-to-face private conversation. In fact, Commissioner O'Malley, I thought she was walking out, she stopped behind me and called me that word, asked me if I heard what she said, and repeated it, and all the while, I was pretty much just getting ready to go. It was not a private conversation, my assistant was sitting about six rows back and heard it himself, other people heard it. So I, I agree that, you know, most of us, the majority of us use foul language in private conversations, but to, again, defile a public space like that, you know, by using that language against a peer, a fellow elected official, is wrong. And also, the, with the threatening behavior toward my assistant, who is an employee of the county, it was just wrong. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I object to this thing that I used threatening language to her assistant. I'm a 66-year-old woman. I'm threatening his assistant, this young man, really, that's ridiculous. I did not use any threatening language to him, I certainly called him out, we had, we had, you know, back and forth kind of thing, but, you know, what, think I was jumping across the dais and trying to threaten him? That's absurd. I just wanna make sure. I just want to make sure that I make that statement because I think that's absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. Without further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, may I issue a resolution number on this one?
Please do.
For item 8B, AR 2022-129.
Thank you. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley? Vice Chair Benson?
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah?
No. Thank you.
We'll move on to item C. Clay Campbell to present our 56th Legislative First Session 2023 Policy Priorities. Thank you, Director Campbell.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Clay Campbell. I'm the Chief of Staff to the County Manager here tonight, seeking your approval for Burnley County's 2023 Legislative Policy Priorities. These priorities have been developed for the 2023 session by staff in collaboration with Deputy County Managers, myself, and our state lobbyists. The resolution is organized according to funding requests or legislative policy initiatives that are fairly broad in scope. Some funding request items include recruitment and retention incentives, particularly for behavioral provider personnel, funding for young adult services and programs in the behavioral health area, criminal justice data integration, fentanyl awareness campaign, and redirecting a portion of the liquor excise tax into line items that focus on addiction treatment, behavioral health initiatives, and law enforcement corrections. And finally, one of the other funding items we're seeking is the establishment of a courthouse renovation fund and increasing the dollar amounts that the state allows for indigent burials. Some legislation and policy initiative wishes in the resolution include data integration sharing is allowed by federal law, expansion of Medicaid-covered services, including for incarcerated individuals, any legislation that supports children's behavioral health and preventative services, modernization of the antiquated anti-donation clause, and law enforcement assisted diversion training initiatives, and finally, a return-to-work amendment under the Para Retirement Program. There's more detail to that, but for now, I stand for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Any comments, discussion? Oh, I guess I move to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion? Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for working with us year-round to establish these and create such great process for, for the way we handle our legislative priorities.
You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can Madam Clerk, please call the vote? Do I need to ask for an AR number? Please give me a AR number for item 8C.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 8C is AR 2022-130.
Thank you. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley? Vice Chair Benson?
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah?
Aye. Thank you. You have a do pass. Now, we'll move on to item D. Can I have an AR number, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes. For item 8D, AR 2022-131.
Thank you. We have economic development, South Campus Tax Increment. Director Gonzalez, 2%.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of a motion to adopt a resolution relating to the South Campus Tax Increment Development District, formed pursuant to the Tax Increment for Development Act by the City of Albuquerque, dedicating percentages of the county's gross receipt tax and percentage of the county's property tax increment revenue for the financing of public infrastructure for the TID. Let you know that we do have Teresa Costadis from the University of New Mexico who'd like to provide a brief overview of the TID.
Thank you, Director. Welcome, Teresa.
Actually, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I am Teresa Costantini. I'm the Executive Vice President for Finance Administration at the University of New Mexico. I wanted to let you know that President Garnet Stokes really wanted to be here today, but she is traveling out of state. Under your leadership and the doubt of County Manager Morisbaka, Burnley County and UNM have joined together to work on a number of projects of importance to our citizens, including most notably, a variety of healthcare and social service initiatives, like the recently announced Behavioral Health Crisis Center and the City-City Homeless Coordinating Council, but also the joint management of the UNM North Golf Course and county-wide small business development through the UNM Anderson School of Management. We want to thank you for your continued support of our collaborative projects and activities. Today, we are presenting our request for county participation in the Joint UNM-City of Albuquerque-South Campus Tax Increment Development District, or TID, which was formed by the City of Albuquerque in October of 2021. This is an effort that will enable the development of underutilized infill land owned by both UNM and the City of Albuquerque to stimulate local and statewide economic opportunities and to provide needed public improvements. We intend to create a vibrant, dynamic, new southern metropolitan gateway for the city, the county, and the state. Our vision at the University of New Mexico is to address critical community challenges. We do that for our mission of serving our community by building an educated, healthy, and economically vigorous New Mexico. If approved by the Board, the South Campus TID will make a significant contribution to our collective efforts. Now, I do have a few slides if you'd like me to go on. I said, all right, about six, seven slides total. All right. So here's our overall approval timeline. As mentioned, the partnership with the City of Albuquerque is complete, and we are looking forward to county participation. Our next steps will be to bring this for approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority and the State Board of Finance in December. And then with that approval, we'll be going for bond authorization by the state during the legislative session beginning in January. Our TID is a governmental mechanism to support economic development and job creation by providing a portion of new gross receipts tax and property tax financing from an area for pre-specified public infrastructure. Governmental entities form TIDS by outlining specific boundaries for development, setting a time period, and in this case, it's 25 years, and then defining in advance the types of development and the types of public improvements that will take place. Then using a portion of those new taxes to pay for those developments and infrastructures. Now, often, TIDS will take place on land that's owned by private developers. But in this case, the South Campus TID is a government-driven collaboration on state and local government-owned lands, much of the land undeveloped. And the public-owned improvements that will be made will have direct public benefit. The South Campus TID is located in the central metropolitan area of Albuquerque in a low-to-moderate-income area, a federally designated opportunity zone, and an area that has few commercial services currently. In fact, we've heard quite clearly from the residents of this area and near this area that they have very limited access to groceries. So here's a picture of the TID boundary map. And though its main area of development is the South Campus area, there are also roadways or gateway parcels, you can see, kind of extended into the north, that will get it up towards the central UNM campus. So within the district environments, we have 192,000 employees, 227,500 residents located within five miles, and 41,000 college students, all being educated within one-half of a mile of the TID location. This area, excuse me, currently receives 1.3 million visitors annually for its sports and entertainment venues, and our hope is to increase that. Next slide. Okay. This shows you the vision proposed for the South Campus in terms of broad land-use areas with expansion of the Science and Technology Park to the north, an entertainment sector near athletic facilities along Cesar Chavez, and a commercial retail district we are calling the Gibson Town Center to the south, where we currently have a signed letter of intent from a large-format retail establishment that will provide groceries. We should note that TID revenues will not be used to fund collegiate or professional athletic facilities, though they will fund the horizontal, horizontal infrastructure, such as roads, drainage, sewer, and transit that will support these activities. The beauty of the TID is that the new tax revenue will pay for the needed public improvements. And much of that space currently is undeveloped dirt. Our hope is to be able to do $19 million of investments in roads, water, and sewer systems, stormwater drainage, and runoff treatment. The plan includes $14 million of dedicated pedestrian and bicycle trails, as well as parks, plazas, streetscapes, and other landscape improvements. There will be $92 million of research and development and innovation building improvements and $45 million of new parking structures. The regional improvements include transit and transportation, public recreation fields and facilities, and public safety facilities. This slide and the next will give you a more detailed sense of the things that can be done with TID revenues. These character sketches illustrate the avenue to Cesar Chavez entry to the South Campus District. And on this next slide, you can see the University Boulevard frontage of the Gibson Town Center. So in conclusion, the South Campus TID will have a significant economic impact. We anticipate a total of 4,450 jobs, including 220 construction and 4,231 permanent jobs, generating $4.2 billion in salaries over the lifetime of that district. More specifically, 1,135 of R&amp;D and office jobs are projected. A significant portion are what we call those base economic jobs related to early-stage tech companies and joint university-national lab collaborations. But in addition, there'll be about 1,700 retail and commercial jobs that are also, as we know, important in New Mexico to a large segment of our population. We are hoping that Burnley County is as excited about this project as we are. If not for this investment, it would take much longer for the area to be developed, and we would not see this level of quality development or cohesion at the site, nor would we see the services to the community and the creation of as many high-paying jobs in the area. We believe this effort will have broad, positive public impact, attract private developers, create jobs, and provide public services and access to groceries, public safety, and retail that will benefit our collective community. It's a sound investment as well. $33 million of basic infrastructure should attract $360 million of private investment, a multiplier of 10 times. Thank you again, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your presentation.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
The TID is, is within the City of Albuquerque and was created by, I mean, put forward by the City of Albuquerque. Is that correct?
Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Malley, that's correct.
Okay. And they are dedicating a percentage of their gross receipts?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, that's correct.
Do you know what percentage that is?
So it would be up to 75% during the...
Are we matching that percentage with the gross receipts?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, that's correct.
Is the state also weighing in?
That's the, Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Malley, that's the next step for the TID, is to have, seek the state's approval, which will happen during this next session.
So this area, is it, does it qualify as a redevelopment area?
Yes. So it is a...
Commissioner, Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Malley, that's correct.
Okay.
I think federal rules.
Federal?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, it's a redevelopment area, but then it's also an opportunity zone as well that was part of the last tax package.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Director Gonzalez, what is the timeframe for this, both in development as well as the return in, in terms of job creation and business development?
Yes. So as we put in the timeframe early on, so that you can see what we're, the timing is, once we get this fully approved, then we'll be able to move forward immediately. And in fact, the TID itself has been created with the city. It's the addition of the county and the state to the activity that will allow us to move forward. But it's actually a functioning TID at this point.
I'm sorry, I mean the timeframe in terms of the construction.
Oh, okay.
Then the attraction of businesses.
Okay. So we are, that is actually already underway. So we're signing letters of intent with businesses to make developments in the TID area. And so that we would hope to see construction. I don't have a specific dates for you, but very soon thereafter.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Piscotti?
Thank you. To the gentleman's point earlier in public comment, what kind of public input has there been around this?
Actually, I'm going to, can you talk about that? Because it's been extensive.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Piscotti, my name is Kim Murphy, former Director of Real Estate for UNM for many, many years. Since my retirement, I've been the project leader on the, on the South Campus TID project on behalf of Lobo Development. We've had substantial input over the years. In fact, many of you are aware that we did a student housing project on South Campus called Lobo Village. And as part of that, we, we went around to all the neighborhood associations, the Kirtland Edition, the Clayton Heights, South Broadway, and, and San Jose Neighborhood Associations. And, and I'm going back in time just to point out that during those conversations, many of the neighborhood members said, "We really need commercial services. We really need to have jobs. When are you going to develop the remainder of the land?" And so this is, this, this project accomplishes that. When we did the, when we went through the city approval process, we notified all the neighborhood associations, consistent with their neighborhood notification policy, put up signs on the property. I received a number of comments from neighborhood associations, again, about, about the desire for us to proceed with, with this kind of development.
Thank you. And thanks for the previous meeting. And I know we did discuss about Burnley County having a table in the future to decide this. Was that, when does that need to happen, Marcos?
Madam Chair, we'll work on that now with the city's TID board and being able to add us onto the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Thank you for the presentation. I move that we pass this. This is in my district. Excited to see positive development happen south of Central and Albuquerque and Burnley County. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Madam, with any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson?
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah?
Aye. Thank you. You have a do pass. Moving on to item 8E. Madam Clerk, please give me an FR number. And Chief Greg Pettis to present on Office of Criminal Justice Behavioral Health Issues.
Yes, Madam Chair. For item 8E, for FR 2022-132.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Pettis. And I see Director Acosta with you, Michael Barn...
Good evening, Madam Chair Barboah and Vice Chair Benson and Commissioners. I'm Pam Acosta, Senior Manager with the Behavioral Health Initiative. I'm accompanied by BHI Supportive Housing Subcommittee Chair Michael Barndollar and Deputy County Manager Chief Greg Pettis, bringing before you a proposal from the Burnley County Health and Public Safety Department, which seeks $1,042,900 in non-recurring funds for a winter wellness motel. The winter wellness motel will serve families within Burnley County who are unhoused or precariously housed. The motel will operate from November of this year until March of 2023 and will be operated solely by the county. The wellness motel will offer much-needed shelter during the coldest months, will provide onsite case management services, and meals to the residents of the shelter. We stand for any questions, and if they would like to say anything else, I would yield the floor to them as well.
Thank you. Well, first, I would like to move approval for this, and we can have discussion. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Discussion or conversation on the, this proposal, Commissioner, Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, Ms. Acosta or Mr. Barndollar, last year, we did this, and I consider it a success. Can you, I didn't ask you before, so you may not be prepared for this, but can you give an idea of the families that, or individuals that were impacted by this? And then what really stood out to me last year was, was the, not the right term, but rehabilitation, where you're getting folks back into situated housing, permanent housing, jobs, and all that, where they needed, they needed some help, and that's what this did, and during the coldest months of the year. So can you give some of the numbers of last year?
Madam Chair, Commissioner. So we had huge success with this project last year. It was ran by the Public Safety Department in partnership with Behavioral Health. We had 60 families, just, just over 60... We had 60 families, just, just over 60 families at the onset. We were able to place 80% of those families at the conclusion of the project. It started out as a three-month project, and actually, with the okay and approval from our county manager, we were able to extend six months. And the rationale behind that is we had people that were right on the verge of achieving housing, and we didn't want to put them back out on the street when they had come so far. So huge success rate with what we were able to do last time around. I can only hope and pray that we have that same success rate this time around with the 50 families that we bring in off of the street into the program, and hopefully we're back before you sharing that success going forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'd just like to note, thank you all for being here. I know when we brought it last year, when I brought this to Commission, we were able to get the wellness hotel, was, we saw this great success, and we did this great debrief, and, you know, every, every piece is important. So thank you for the staff that made that a success, and followed through, and gave the kind of care to those families, so that they could feel that that was a safe environment for the interim.
Madam Chair, I would add to, this is for all of the community members out there who voted for the behavioral health tax, this is your tax dollars at work, and they're truly making a change in those that are suffering most out on the streets tonight. So, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Barndollar? I always love to hear from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Benson, members of the Commission. This obviously came to the Supportive Housing Subcommittee, and we had a wonderful, robust discussion, and approved unanimously. It's so important going into the winter months, and so we wanted to get this before you as soon as possible. So we're here tonight, and Chief Perez and his staff are doing a marvelous job. And the great news is, the city's going to do a similar wellness motel with their funding. And so we're basically, by having the county do this work, we're doubling the number of families we get off the street this winter. So, and it's a great, great program, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. No further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson?
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah?
Aye. Thank you, I have a do pass. Pam, I believe you guys stick around for the next one, item 8F. Can I please have a FR number?
Yes, Madam Chair, for item 8F2, FR 2022-133.
Thank you. And Ms. Pam Acosta to present.
All right. Okay. Again, I'm accompanied by BHI Subcommittee, Housing Subcommittee, Michael Barndollar, and Carol Pierce, Director of Family and Community Center of the City of Albuquerque, bringing before you a proposal from the City of Albuquerque, which seeks 621,000 in nonrecurring funds from the Behavioral Health Initiative to assist with the immediate needs and improvements of the West Side Emergency Housing Center. Intended funding will be used to purchase toilets and sinks for three dorms, new bedding, bunk beds, mattresses, pony walls, and outdoor shade structures. The proposal has been presented to and approved by the BHI Supportive Housing Subcommittee and the BHI Steering Committee, and in accordance with AR 2020-51, the proposal was shared with ABCGC and APS via email once the meeting was canceled. We stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to, I would like to move for approval, and we can have discussion. I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, and open for discussion. Great, I just want to say thank you. I was, during Hope Works, they had a barbecue, and I got to go sit with some of the folks and eat a hamburger that were there. And during that, while I was sitting there, I got to talk to some of the folks that were there, and they talked about, they called themselves, they called the WEC their home. And they said that they were going to be going home, and they were asking each other when you were going to catch the shuttle to go home. So I think it's so important that we make this home that folks are living in a place that, that can, can be of quality. So thank you so much for bringing this, and I move to approve, and we have a second. Can you please call the vote?
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson?
Aye.
Madam Chair Barboah?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, that ends item 8 in all its letters. We will now move on to approvals and to discussion. Item 10A?
Is that the appointment?
No, we have the solar energy generation, Commissioner Casada, to, to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, you know, renewable energy is the direction of Burnaleo County and, and probably the state of New Mexico. It is something that's super important to us as we move forward. As we transition into more electrical, from vehicles to, to many other things that are going to be going into that direction, we have to start establishing how we're going to create that power, how we're going to have that energy, and how it all turns into being clean energy. We know that it'll be many, many years before we are completely, you know, solar-powered when it comes to our grid. So we want to be able to start paving the way for that future. And as you know, we run into many times where land use and being able to use the land for solar energy becomes problematic based on the zoning. And since we do not have many, many places where we can do solar, and to streamline it and to make it a quicker process for clean energy, I am, I am asking for us to discuss this, to where we can administer special use permits for different types of zonings in order to allow solar and solar farms and, and any kind of renewable, clean energy. I think in the future, we're also going to start looking at how we have solar energy from block to block. And, and that would also be problematic if we have to wait to go through many different types of zone changes. I think it would probably be more beneficial if we can look at what we can do through the special use permit process, and, and then eventually, you know, look at how we, when we put a master plan together, how we're going to look at where we're going to put renewable energy opportunities for development and for future grid possibilities for the future of clean energy. So I brought this up basically for discussion, and, and hopefully we can move it forward at the next meeting. And I definitely welcome any kind of amendments or discussion.
Okay, any discussion?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I want to acknowledge you, Commissioner Casada, I'm not even seeing you on my screen, but I heard everything you said, and I feel like I don't have anything really to add. I, I know that, you know, solar energy, green energy is our path forward, so I certainly welcome further analysis of how to do that in a, in a good, productive way. And I thank you for bringing this up for discussion.
Thank you. If not, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yeah, Commissioner O'Malley?
Yeah, this pertains to this future resolution that, that is up for discussion, and I guess is expected to be before us, and, you know, on the 13th. This is in particular to property that is within the Santalina Master Plan. I was, Dave Campbell, who represents a solar company that's interested in a solar field, did speak with me about this. He has a resolution where we would create, I guess, the, the, some kind of overlay zone that would bypass our processes for zone change, and so that would keep the underlying zoning or the entitlements to a piece of property, the Santalina Master Plan, which has a lot of entitlements, so that they don't have to change their zone. And not too long ago, they did submit an amendment, and we did approve it. There was a portion of property that was at the edge of the Santalina Master Plan, and it was, we, we did downzone that property, and it went through the process or the processes that we have, which is an amendment of the, of the master plan. I think this is a way to go around that. I, of course, support renewable energy, but we don't have in place now, there's no such thing as an overlay zone. The, if you want to amend the master plan, you have to go through the master plan process to amend it. And, and Rico, I, if you're, I would like you to be part of this discussion, Rico, if you would mind coming up and explaining what our ordinances require for amending. And if you could weigh in on this discussion, that would be good as well.
Madam Chair, members of the, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Benson, if you can hear me. I think I'm familiar with this. I did meet with Mr. Campbell about a week or so ago about this particular item, and we had a lengthy conversation. Mr. Campbell has also met with our staff several times, as have our staff met with Wall and other developers over the last several years. So this is very similar to the interim use discussion that this Commission voted on that was appealed to District Court and then supported by the District Court. So similar version. I don't know where this is going to end up, but a couple of things I just wanted to mention, and just get on the record, because it sounds like this will come back. So with regard to solar energy, I wanted to just make it very clear that we have a fairly robust program in place. I think we issue about two solar energy permits per day every year for the last three or four years. So the county is very kind of respect, receptive to solar energy and other types of alternative energy throughout. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, this Commission also approved an ordinance allowing shared solar just a few months ago. You'll all remember, that was very innovative, that was very groundbreaking. And you also just approved about 600 acres on Santalina for solar energy another couple months ago. So that was also very supportive of renewable energy in the county. The, and I don't know what everyone's looking at, but the, the resolution that Mr. Campbell proposed to me did have some issues that I am concerned about, and I just want to get those on the record. One of them is that we have longstanding constructions and interpretations in our master plan communities. Now remember, one master plan community is Mesa del Sol, and the other one is Santalina. Those constructions go back to approvals that go back many years. In the county, it goes back to about 2015. So we have a master plan approval, a Level B master plan approval, a Level A development agreement, a Level B development agreement, a zone change that was approved by this Commission. So there is a underlying framework and approval process in place. Part of that is adopted by resolution, part of that is adopted by ordinance. Proposing a resolution to overturn an ordinance is very problematic, and it puts staff in a very bad position. A resolution, as you know, is the lowest form of legislation. An ordinance is the highest, that's the law. Something like this probably needs to be discussed very vigorously. I want to be very frank, I want to be very respectful of your time. If an ordinance, if a resolution is adopted, our staff will follow the ordinance. We have no choice, that's the law. I don't want to put staff in a position where they are in conflict with what this board has voted on. It's been appealed, District Court judges have upheld it, and then now we're doing something different. So I welcome the discussion. I do know that in the case of Santalina, we're looking at a major plan amendment, a solar field that would be thousands of acres. In a, in a plan that is 13,000 acres, I've seen proposals of up to 6,000 acres of solar for 50 years. Our remedy would be to have them amend the plan and say, "We'll come back in 40 years" and approve our development. But to have a master plan and grant special exceptions over and over kind of nullifies the whole kind of concept of having a master plan. So there's other ways to approach this. I stand for questions, our staff is available, but those are a couple of things I just wanted to mention. I don't want to see it defiant, but I want to be very clear about, you know, what the staff will do moving forward. And I want to be very respectful of your time, and I know it's a controversial issue, so I wanted to get that out upfront.
I appreciate your clarity, Deputy Director.
Yeah, I appreciate that as well. And I think that you mentioned that this, this idea of, of wanting to do solar there has been talked about now for several years. There has been an opportunity to, for the owner to amend the plan. I think they're just obviously trying to do a shortcut without having to amend the plan, and again, keep the underlying, what's called, the underlying zoning, and, because that has value. So I appreciate your frankness, and obviously, we'll be talking about this, if it's, if it's put forward, we will be talking about it when it comes before us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for clarifying staff's position. I did, you know, I, Mr. Campbell did reach out to me as well, and I just advised him that we will need to stick to the plan and follow the process to amend it or make changes. And so I hope that we can stick to the law as you stated.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make it clear, we have a number of solar energy facilities that are approved by special use permit. We have hundreds of acres in use that are owned by PNM that we've approved under special use permit. Doing that in a master plan area requires something a little bit different, but I think it's very clear that we are all very much in support of renewable energy. So I don't want to create this scenario or this perception that we are not. It's more about respecting the integrity of a process that we began, I began, and our staff back in 2013. So if you all stand for any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Casada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and this is the reason why I brought it forward. I just wanted for us to have these discussions. I need, we need to look at, you know, how we're going to move forward on, on larger properties. You know, thanks for, you know, clarifying the processes. It's just something I wanted us all to discuss. I, I didn't, you know, I, I wasn't trying to ram something down anybody's throat, and, you know, this is not just for my district, definitely not just for Santalina, despite some opinions. This is for all of Burnaleo County. This could happen in any one of your districts, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we publicly discuss this, on what our processes are, and where options are to move forward in, in a timely manner, in a quick, quick manner. As you know, anytime we try to amend a master plan, it takes, it's a very long process. I get it's, it is our process, but, you know, sometimes we have opportunities that are, are happening rather quickly, and if we don't respond quickly, then we could possibly lose those opportunities. And I just want to make sure that we look at what our policies are and how we move things forward, and that sometimes, you know, we want to be able to move things quicker because of the fact that, you know, there's, there's, there's some time elements to some of the projects. Because sometimes when they're bringing a project, or they're building a plant, or they're doing whatever, right, and they, and they're requiring a zone change, sometimes if it's a lengthy process, they move to another state, or they move on to another place. And so sometimes, when you meet with people, you kind of get a sense of, well, you know, if we don't get this done, we may lose it. And so again, this is not for, and despite whatever they're going to say, this is not based on Santalina's master plan or Mesa del Sol, which are both in my district, by the way, but as Burnaleo County as a whole. You know, in case this opportunity may come into someone else's district, I want you to be able to have that avenue to explore for different opportunities. That's all. And I'm, and I'm grateful for the conversation, I respect everybody's opinion on this, from, from the Commission to staff. And this is just basically, I brought it forward for us to discuss it, and to look at all angles. As you know, I always look... As you know, I always look at all angles. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Since we're discussing this, it's brought up for discussion. To amend the master plan and, and we did amend the master plan, as you said, for the 700 acres of solar, I don't think that took that long. What is the, what are the, how long does it take to amend a master plan, assuming that everybody, everything is in place?
So, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission, so we've been having this discussion for three or four years.
Yes, that's what I understand.
Solar, solar facilities. And so in recent months, I've instructed the staff in Planning Development Services and Elias, Richard, our DCM for Public Works has done the same with his staff, to try to come up with a process to amend a master plan. And I think we can do so in a matter of months. The special use permit process is also a matter of months. I think that these are both viable things and I think the only issue is, and I think we also have the tools to get there. They are different processes if you're a master plan area or if you're in a, not in a master planned area. I know that Mesa del Sol is currently going through their process to make some amendments. They are moving through the appropriate channels to do so, that is, moving through the city planning commission. My hope is that we are able to be consistent and do, treat both of these master plans that were approved with the same criteria in the same manner. I think that in both cases, it is, is going to require a process that we have in place that we followed. And if the, we're just moving, we may be moving into a situation where these public utility facilities, these large facilities, and they occupy land for 50, 40 years, they really do require some kind of analysis so that we don't disrupt this whole master planning process, which, which the applicant asked us to approve. And so we are now trying to, and now they're asking us to kind of not, you know, somewhat deviate from it. We want to ensure that in the long run, there's integrity when it comes to land use, planning, economic development and so on, because predictability is very close, a very close friend of economic development. And we want to ensure that these things move hand in hand together. So again, we're open to the discussion, we've had the discussion. I just want to warn you that there are some pitfalls in doing something very, along the lines of a resolution that's intended to overturn an ordinance.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Kessada.
So after, you know, having a discussion and listening to Mr., Mr. Grady, yeah, I mean, I, I don't need to move this forward. I'm satisfied with the discussion and I'm satisfied with the processes. I was just, felt that, you know, we needed to discuss this, get this out in the open to make sure that we were all okay. And I'm, I'm okay with what Mr. Grady has just told us. And, you know, there's no reason to move this forward unless they're willing to, you know, amend it to where it's, it fits more about how we keep the master plan in place. Because, you know, one of, one of the things I have fought for is to keep a master plan. And like I said, I've drug myself through the mud or, or I've been drugged through the mud, standing strong to a master plan and keeping a master plan in place. So after this, this discussion, yeah, I, I don't really have the desire to, to move it forward to the next meeting. You know, I appreciate the discussion and, and for giving us the information that we needed and that the public will, will now know the information that we need as we move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so we will move on and I'm going to again, set a little bit of a roadmap. We're going to announce the next commission meeting. We'll take a 15-minute recess just so that we can have a short bio break, hopefully you can too. And then we'll be back to move on to item 13, which is the appointment of Senate District 26. So I'm going to now announce the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, administrative meeting at 5:00 PM here in Ken Sanchez Chambers. We will now take a 15-minute recess and return at 7:05.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience with us and joining us this evening for a long night. I want to share again the brief roadmap. For those who might be newly joining us, we concluded our regular Burnley County Commission Administrative Meeting and took a brief 15-minute recess. We will now begin with the appointment of Senate District 26, the appointment process with the public comment.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to point a clarification.
Yes.
I know that, Julianne, and I talked with you earlier, Julie, about this. Would I would move these items I talked to you about, do I do them now? Julianne, or after public comment?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, is that your discretion on when you want to make that motion? It probably is appropriate to do so before public comment.
Okay. Thank you, yes. I wanted to bring up that I believe that Commissioner Pescotti should recuse herself, and I'm going to say why. It's on the record that she accepted a $5,000 in-kind contribution from Vanessa Alarid, which is the wife of Representative Mo Maestas, who is one of the nominees. It's basically Section 130-H2 that there is a limit of $1,000 for a code of conduct in the Code of Donut for political contribution. Under this, I believe Ms. Alarid is a restricted donor because she was paid by Western Albuquerque Land Holdings to lobby the county, and she is seeking an official action of the county under Code 2-129. The code of conduct classifies a political donation over $1,000 from a restricted donor as a gift. Any official receiving a prohibited gift, any gift over 100 cannot let that gift influence the execution or integrity of their official act. Therefore, I believe she should recuse herself from a vote for the senator of replacement because Ms. Alarid's husband is one of the nominees. I think this is important because we are making an appointment in lieu of an election because the people in Senate District 26 don't get to exercise their right to vote. That process should be completely fair. If a commissioner has a potential conflict, they should not be allowed to vote. That is decision, Madam Chair, by Ms. Pescotti. She's the one who would have to make that decision.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you for sharing your opinion, Commissioner O'Malley. Vanessa Alarid is not the candidate here, it's her husband, and so he has never given me one thin dime, and I've only spoken to him just a handful of times. I've spoken to all the candidates, all the applicants in this process, he was one of them, but other than that, I have no other relationship with Representative Maestas, so there is no conflict of interest there. And also, this is not a quasi-judicial proceeding, this is an appointment, and so I feel no need to recuse myself. And anything about that donation will, you know, information will come out, this isn't the time or place to discuss it. There's due process, and so the task at hand is to do the appointment. And so I appreciate your suggestion, Commissioner O'Malley, but I will not recuse myself from this vote. I do not have a conflict of interest, and in fact, when Vanessa Alarid did lobby all of the commissioners, I believe, in July for a Santalina project, the tire landfill, I did not attend that meeting, and yet all the other commissioners voted in favor of the Santalina Tire Landfill. I did not even attend that meeting, so I did not vote for that. So you have very scant evidence that I have any conflict of interest in this, so therefore I will not recuse myself, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to, there was a ethics violation that was filed on Thursday, the hearing will be on December 2nd, this is ethic violation that Commissioner Pescotti did violate the county code of ethics regarding this contribution, and again, it will be on December 2nd. So I'm going to move that we defer this appointment until after that meeting.
I can second that. I think, any further discussion?
I have further discussion, Madam Chair? That meeting on December 2nd is a preliminary hearing, and in this country, we do hold that people are innocent until proven guilty, and so I will be presenting evidence myself and find out more about the charges. A charge is not, and an accusation is not something that sticks until it goes through a hearing and a trial. You know this, you all know this. So there's no reason to defer this at this point. Even though there are accusations, accusations are a dime a dozen, and so anybody can say anything, I've already shown that I have no conflict of interest. I have not consistently supported Santalina, which is the biggest project that Ms. Alarid comes to the county for. In fact, I'll just say it, I've been a part of lawsuits from both Santalina and the New Mexico Environmental Law Center, and I have prevailed in both of those with the judge saying, in fact, complimenting me on my diligence in how I analyze and do respect quasi-judicial process. So if a judge has actually ruled that I had no conflict of interest, then I think that has been adjudicated, and that is quite good evidence that I can separate out, you know, perhaps a donation from actually making a judgment in a case. And again, Vanessa Alarid is not on trial here, she is not a candidate, and quite frankly, I find it sexist that this keeps coming up because this is the man's wife, and if people are voting for things that she is lobbying for, then perhaps she's doing a good job of lobbying, maybe they like her, what she's presenting, because not every legislator is married to Vanessa Alarid. And so I find it actually a little insulting that she's been thrown under the bus so much for being a successful, you know, bubbly outgoing person, and that somehow because Mo Maestas is married to her, that somehow that should be a mark against him. I think quite the opposite. I don't know them, I see pictures on Facebook, they seem to have a lovely family, so I just don't get the animosity. And again, I think I've proven that I have not been playing favorites or had a conflict of interest. Thank you.
I think what we're talking about, right, is that, I agree, we're not talking about Vanessa Alarid, we're talking about money contributions to a campaign that happened just this June. So previous votes, to me, would it mean that, it'd be, what does that very large maxed-out donation contribute to in those final moments? But maybe she just wanted to contribute to your win. So we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? All right, Madam Quick, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pescotti.
And again, we're voting on whether or not to defer?
Yes.
Is it?
Yes.
No, let's continue.
Commissioner Kessada.
No.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson.
No.
Madam Chair Barboah.
Yes. Thank you, that motion fails. We, I wanted to, so as we've done these, I said now five times, I've been a part of these, we received so many emails and public comment through emails, I want to, every time we, the chair usually sort of names out. So we did get to, close to 250 residents reached out, we had 66 recommend Julie Radicovich, 46 recommend Mo Maestas, another 14 recommended Emma Ward, and there were other comments or comments made by double folks. But I like to give recognition to the folks who took the time to write letters of support and be part of that process.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Kessada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, something that hasn't been discussed when it comes to a conflict of interest, and I don't know if anyone is aware, but I feel that there's also a conflict of interest when somebody is a paid registered lobbyist, and that they're able to appoint a seat in the legislature, and then able to go and lobby them in January. And that's something that has not been discussed at all, and I think if anyone has that up there and is doing that, that's also a conflict of interest, and I believe if there's a commissioner that's a registered lobbyist that is herself or himself appointing legislatures or appointed officials, perhaps maybe that also could be looked at as a conflict of interest. And I'm hoping that the news media will also look into that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Kessada. So we'll now begin with public comment. As a reminder, we've already taken general public comment related to the Burnley County Commission meeting, and this public comment period will relate solely to the Senate District 26 appointment. So this is a little bit different because we have more, obviously, speakers are limited to the first 45 speakers who have signed up online or in person. You'll have one minute to share your comments, you then will be notified when your time is up. We will begin with in-person speakers and then move to virtual speakers. Julianne, please proceed in announcing the speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I call your name, if you can make your way down to the podium, we will start with Lance Chilton, followed by Catherine Chilton, followed by Sasha Pellerin.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Chilton, I've lived in Burnley County 48 years as a teacher and artist, and my husband Lance will speak with me, he served as a pediatrician in this county for 43 years. We are pleased that there are good candidates for this position, and we would like to speak of one that we feel is outstanding.
We know, Kathy and I know Julie Radoslovich primarily as the principal of this South Valley Academy, which she served at as for many years. She not only helped our grandson when he was a student at that school, but she also helped to grow other children in the South Valley neighborhood, and from throughout New Mexico and throughout Burnley County into children who would do well in later education. The South Valley Academy grew greatly during her time as the principal through her efforts, and showed her abilities that she was able to do that.
Her leadership is in a variety of areas, in education, in healthcare, neighborhood services, parks, and immigrant justice, and that service has been remarkable.
Speaking personally for Kathy and me, we'd like to note that Ms. Radoslovich showed her concern for children not yet in school by being the first to support a program that we and others started to deliver monthly free books to preschool children through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. We feel that Julie Radoslovich would be the best qualified to serve in the State Senate representing District 26, and we would be lucky to have her in the State Senate. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sasha Pellerin, followed by Sandra Ortsman, followed by Maria Painter, Marla Painter.
Thank you, Sasha, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Sasha Pellerin, and I'm a former activist and educator and also a former student of Julie Radoslovich. I'm here to support her appointment to Senate District 26. It's no question that Julie is qualified for this, if you look at her resume, it's very obvious. What I would like to focus on this afternoon is the unteachable leadership skills and qualities, and as well as the unique experiences that make Julie qualified for this position. I think back to my senior year in high school at South Valley Academy as one of her students when she danced polka with one of my close friends. So for those of you who are wondering, Radoslovich is not a traditional New Mexican name, and it's not part of our South Valley community, at least until her family settled there a few generations ago. Polka is a tradition she shared with our school community along with other things like baking cookies with things that we had never heard of, ingredients that were new to us, and bringing things like crepes to some of our events. It's her ability to add levity to learning and collaboration that will make her a great candidate for this position, her true joy in building communities through shared experience, and her commitment to agency for people in the South Valley and the southwest side of town. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to ask, because we have a lot of people, please stick to the minute and close up tightly if you need to. Thank you, Ms. Sandra Ortsman.
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Sandra Ortsman, and I'm very excited to be here to ask you to vote for Julie Radoslovich to fill the vacant seat, Senate District 26 seat. I stand here today representing myself as an engaged community member, small business owner, and mother of small children, but I've had the pleasure of working closely with Julie for many years through many different community organizations, all focused on strengthening community and education advocacy, including fundraising for the South Valley Academy, which you know she led for many years. When Commissioner Kessada spoke about solar energy, I was reminded that Julie converted SVA facilities to have solar panels to save money on monthly payments for the school, but also to support the planet. More recently, volunteering our time together to support adult education opportunities for immigrants, Julie is the kind of leader that we need. She knows and loves her community, and is an extremely creative thinker. From our shared work, two things that stand out to me about Julie are, one, her follow-through are, one, her follow-through. Julie does what she says she's going to do. And two, she knows how to collaborate. She gets along with others. She leverages her networks. She's a team player. And she believes in the power of collective action, the things that can happen when we work together. And that is what we need in our Senate. So thank you.
Thank you.
Marla Painter, followed by Adrian Martinez, followed by Shelley Roberts.
Thank you, Commissioners, Chairwoman. My name is Marla Painter. I live in the South Valley, southern part of the county. And to begin with, I just have to say that I too, Commissioner Pescotti, am shocked, saddened, and offended by the way this process has rolled out. The fact that we have to go through IPRA to get the names of the candidates for you to appoint is unbelievable to me in a democratic society. Apart from that, I'm here to support Julie Radoslovich. She is an outstanding member of this community. She reaches out to everybody, knows how this place works, and has always been a stellar member and is politically educated, savvy, understands the process, and isn't prejudiced and hasn't been an official for years with all of the stuff that goes along with being that. So I encourage you to appoint Julie. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Painter. Yes, Adrian Martinez.
Good evening, distinguished Commission. My name is Adrian Martinez. And I'm a teacher at South Valley Academy. I'm here to advocate for Julie Radoslovich to be appointed to fill the vacancy for SD 26. I have known Julie for 15 years where I worked at her at South Valley Academy. She was a fellow teacher. She then advanced to administration. And she ultimately became the school's director. She served in that position in a very effective way. Working with teachers, students, and families is not an easy thing to do, but she was able to successfully accomplish this for a number of years. Julie left that position because she wanted to take care and spend more time with her mother. She was dedicated to her mother. And I'm sure it was a great comfort and help to her mom during her final years. Julie understands the meaning of family. This is evident in her dedication to her school as to her, to her school and her community families. Julie is a very smart, dedicated, and organized professional. She is thoughtful in her processes and meetings in both groups and individually. She's a great planner, very organized, and a great listener. This is why I'm advocating for her today. Thank you for your, for your time, Madam Chair and Commission members.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Short minute.
Speed reading.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Shelley Roberts. And I join you tonight to shine a spotlight on Julie Radoslovich, who I have known from her first day of teaching to her retirement. And it's been a career that has just been devoted to not only building a school in the South Valley, but she has grown so many networks to address educational and economic inequality. So I'm going to give two examples. Her first assignment was to design a four-year service learning program to nurture civic engagement and job readiness. And today, students, every Thursday afternoon, go throughout the community, working in schools, nonprofits, exploring opportunities for careers. They do capstone community action projects. And they benefit from workforce training through paid internships. And her very last assignment was to serve on the Governor's Teacher Evaluation Task Force. And New Mexico Public Education Department actually adopted the teacher.
Sorry, we can't keep doing this all night. I'm sorry. Thank you for your time. I know you've been waiting. I appreciate everybody. I just have to stick to the minutes so we could get through. But truly appreciate everyone being here and your patience.
Valeria Ojeda Avitia, Justin Trager, Michael May.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Valeria. And I am a resident of Senate District 26. I'm here to voice my support for Julie Radoslovich. Whether we are in her neighborhood by Pat Hurley Park or in my neighborhood of Esra Mormon, Julie tells me everything that's happening in my community. When it comes to Senate District 26, she is an expert. She's always telling me about how passionate she is about education. And she has a proven track record supporting New Mexico's youth, whether it's through job readiness programs or through graduation. I ask you today to fully consider her application. She would be an excellent representative for my community. And I know that she has a proven track record for standing up for everyone in the community. So with that, I thank you for taking her application into full consideration and giving her a fair shot at this. Because I know that she would be an excellent representative and a great member to just stand up for all of us. So thank you in advance.
Thank you. Mr. Justin Trager.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, my name is Justin Trager. I am speaking today to ask you to vote for Julie Radoslovich for Senate District 26. I stand here today not to diminish the other candidates who are getting into politics. I have appreciation and respect for what Representative Miestes has done for the residents of New Mexico. However, I am here to advocate that you take advantage of this opportunity to break a fresh, new voice, informed, compassionate voice to New Mexico Legislature. Julie's life exemplifies a commitment to service and give back to her native community. After having the opportunity to leave the state for her education, a career for federal health policy, she realized something was missing. And it was giving back to the community of New Mexico and South Valley that gave her so much. She returned to become a first-year teacher at the South Valley Academy, where we were coworkers, because she thought the best way she could contribute was to give back to what she does so much. Even after retiring, she still wants to be of use. I'm asking you to bring a new thoughtful voice, informed, hard-working voice and servant leader. Doesn't need to be an either or, it could be a yes and.
Thank you.
Michael May, followed by Leila Rogers, followed by Ona Porter.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Mike May. I'm the Director of Workforce Learning at Future Focused Education, where I create paid internships for underserved youth in the community. I've known Julie Radoslovich for 20 years. And I'm pleased to recommend her for the open seat in Senate District 26. I'd like to share just three characteristics that stand out to me that recommend her for this role. First of all, as has been mentioned, she's a natural collaborator, committed to community engagement and serving underserved and vulnerable communities in Albuquerque and the South Valley. Her years as teaching and leading South Valley are emblematic and proof of that. She's also an innovator, understands the value of economic development. A few years ago, she used a KELOG grant to create a workforce training program and paid internships for South Valley alumni. And finally, she's passionate and understands the needs of her community and is adept at working with people from diverse backgrounds to get things done. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Stephen Michael, bring him up.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Lilia Rogers Valenzuela. Before I begin with my comments, I want to ask all of Julie Rad supporters to please stand. Thank you, everybody. So before beginning, so I've known Julie Rad for over 20 years and through different avenues as an educator, as a principal, as well as colleagues. I've had the opportunity to get to know Julie Rad through those different avenues and see her hard work, especially like working with her students, explicitly like watching her step into those moments of support when the students need it, literally helping students provide, get them shoes for work when they can. So I'm very passionate for Julie Rad. She's an incredible supporter of myself, getting me through school, and just helping me be where I'm at right now. So I owe a lot to Julie Rad. And I support her fully for everything she's done for me. So I ask you guys to appoint Julie Rad for the Senate Seat 26.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ona Porter. I have worked as an advocate for social justice in New Mexico for more than 40 years. But tonight, I'm here to speak as a resident of the county of Burnley. When I think of public service, I think of Julie. When I think of leadership and integrity, I think of Julie. When thoughtful, inclusive, creative thinker is on my mind, so is Julie. Having partnered with her in efforts to transform opportunities available to South Valley residents, her community-centric filter for decision-making surfaced as a profound understanding of this fact. Children, their families, communities, and businesses thrive together. Understanding that the promise of America belongs to all of us, her values, beliefs, and determination for justice in a challenging system will not be compromised. Will you, will yours, as you consider her appointment tonight? I hope not.
Thank you, Ms. Painter.
Sally Alice, followed by Sara Samani, followed by Elaine Hebard.
Go ahead and please just state your name for the record. And we'll.
It would be my first foray into politics, and I view that as a strength. With experience as a federal health policy analyst and principal at a highly successful 6th through 12 public school, I can jump in immediately and bring proven solutions to help families right now. I don't come with any special interest backing me, just my lifetime of experience growing up here and living through the same struggles that many of you live daily. Thank you for your consideration. I am the best candidate to serve District 26.
Chair Barboa, Vice Chair Benson, Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Quesada, and Commissioner Pescotti. Next, Dan Serrano and M. Ward, after. And just to note, Julie Radoslovich is out of the country at this moment is why she sent a video in instead of being here in person. Mr. Dan Serrano, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dan Serrano. I've submitted my packet to you all, my resume, my outline of the experience I've had in the community. I've been a Westsider for approximately 25 years. I grew up in a small community east of here, Santa Rosa, New Mexico. My dad was the county sheriff and magistrate judge. My grandfather was the last elected Republican state legislator to ever come out of Waterloosa County. I think my great-grandchildren will still attest to him being the only Republican state legislator to come out of Waterloosa County when it comes their time to maybe do public service. I've been a public servant. I'm not a perfect servant, like we all are, but I've been a public servant. My resume speaks for itself. I don't want to take the two minutes and go through it. But I do want to start off by thanking those that have submitted their names for this position because it takes a lot of courage, whether you're elected or been in a neighborhood president or whatever you've done. I've taken it upon myself to try to teach my children and others that public service is a duty because that's how I grew up. I put myself out, I've run for office, but I still got up the next day when I didn't win. The sun still came out. And I still got back up on the horse and did public service. You don't have to be an elected official to be a leader. That's the one thing I learned. And I think you all know that. My experience is diverse. Law enforcement, economic development. I founded the Westside Chamber of Commerce. I've coached for a number of years. I run a nonprofit for youth basketball. I'm the state AU basketball director. I have, so I understand the issues. I understand that we shouldn't be competing with Mississippi or anyone for the bottom, that we have economic development needs to keep our children here. We need to take care of our youth, our health, dirty, education, law enforcement. I've used up my time. But I can go on and on. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Yes, we have M. Ward, followed by Donald Wood.
Prior to my spiel, I'm just wondering if the person who's driving Zoom can check to see if Sally Alice was actually on Zoom instead of in person? I know that she was going to speak on my behalf. So I don't know.
You can go ahead, and we'll follow up and let her speak after.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have another showing of the ongoing political theater, that is New Mexico, tragedy comedy at its finest. There are times when a backstage person finds it necessary to step onto the stage. This usually happens to announce a change of actor or deliver bad news and ask the audience to exit the building in an orderly manner. I find myself in the position of stepping onto the stage and offering to fill a temporary role. I am highly capable. I am committed to the district. And perhaps, most importantly, I care. I invite you to call for intermission because frankly, some of the players need a timeout. We can then look forward to a second act of thoughtful governance, one that features the interests of District 26 residents and showcases protection of the show-stopping natural beauty on the West Side. And we must bring down the curtain on backdoor deals and moneyed interests. I don't ask for your applause, but humbly request your vote of support to fill the vacancy in SD 26. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Donald Wood, followed by Peter Zollinger.
Good evening, and thank you all.
Good evening.
My name's Donald Wood. I'm a resident of the West Side. I grew up on the West Side before I-40 even came through. I've seen the growth. I've seen the poverty on the West Side. The West Side now is Albuquerque's future with nothing but expansion for industry. We have to learn, as residents of District 26, to live with the industries that are coming in and protect our communities and make our neighborhoods safe again, safe and quiet to where we all want to go home every day, every day. As the South Valley and the schools on the West Side have always been neglected. I've been able to participate in youth sports from Los Lunas to Rio Rancho. And I've seen the schools and the facilities on the east side of Albuquerque are just amazing. Why can't we bring that to the West Side? My name is Donald Wood, and I want to thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. I believe our last applicant, Peter Zollinger.
Commissioners, I won't hide my primary purpose. I wish you to confirm Representative Antonio Mo Miestes. And then I wish to be considered for his seat. Okay, Mo has done the work in our party to earn this. Not only does he have the knowledge, skills, abilities, but he has been in the trenches of what? The Democratic Party. Now.
Mr. Zollinger?
This?
This time, the time for public comment in support of applicants has finished?
That's what I'm about to say, Commissioner. As I say, I wish to succeed him in House District 16.
Well, if that is open, then you can apply in.
Well, yes, okay.
Okay.
Now.
Unless you would like to enter yourself as this, I'd like to ask you to.
That is what I am about to do, Commissioner, please.
Thank you.
Okay. What have people done to earn this in this highly political, very partisan process? These two districts, there's no point in either of them in a Republican filing. These two districts, there's no point in either of them in a Republican filing. I have plenty of witnesses in this room that this is something I know something about, something I know an awful lot about. Okay, what if you don't want Mo? That I wish you to consider be the merits I have achieved, the knowledge, skills, abilities, and basically doing the grunt work for the Democratic Party because this is Democratic. I have walked and walked and walked its streets, admittedly for the partisan purpose of supporting Democrats, not only for the nomination petition signatures and the $5 qualifying contributions, but to get them to vote for Democrats. This should be what should matter in this process. Now, again, for either, I would not expect, I would not period seek retention. But you say, Pete, why?
Sorry, Ms. Porter.
Well, okay, you interrupted me, ma'am. Let me make up that time, please.
We'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay. You say, Pete, why? You want to retire. Yes, yes, I do. Well, what would I do with the legislature? First, I'd be one of the troops. I'd support our party leadership, hopefully enhancing Governor Johan Grisham's economic program. And there is something else, given my past personal history. I wish to secure a woman's right to an abortion, given what I've done in the past. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zollinger.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, for the record. Now is not the time for questions. We will open for discussion in a minute. Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the record, we did stop the clock during your exchange.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, thank you to all the applicants. I truly appreciate your courage, your commitment to our communities, and your courage to stand up in this process. We will take a reminder that this is a period for discussion. We'll take nominations after the discussion. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments for the applicants by the commission at this
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
This has really been a year of orchestrated schemes, and I want to speak to that. A year ago, then Senator Jacob Candelaria made it clear that he was not going to seek reelection. That's when Representative Mo Maestas and he began, and I'll just call it a scheme in earnest, to get Mo appointed to Candelaria's seat so he could run as an incumbent and would not have to run for two years. This was evident in December of last year when this commission was at the end of our redistricting process, when at the last minute, with Commissioner Casada's help, they made a last-minute move to create a new District One, a West Side district that excluded half of the existing district, the North Valley or Ivory Side. That was an attempt to control the legislative seats on that side. That did not go their way, so Casada moved an amendment to take out the precinct where Commissioner-elect Barbara Baca lives on the West Side. So she could not run for commission of District One. Barbara's not been a fan of sprawl development, and she has concerns about the future of water. That failed too, obviously. Not to be discouraged, Commissioner Maestas and company tried to convince Senator Harold Pope, Harold Pope was approached, I don't know if it was directly by Commissioner, by Representative Maestas, when the state legislature took up redistricting, to withdraw the boundaries of his Senate district so that Representative Maestas could be in Candelaria's district. Maestas decided not to run against Commissioner, against Senator Pope. Senator Pope was having none of that, so Mo bought a house in Candelaria's district, Senator Candelaria's district. To me, what is disturbing, and we're talking about ethics, unethical, and very suspect, is the fact that Representative Maestas and Senator Candelaria denied the voters in their districts, their constituents, the people they're supposed to be fighting for, the right to choose their representative in the legislature for over the next two years. Candelaria could have resigned earlier in their year, and Maestas could have told his constituents that he was seeking the Senate seat, allowing one of his constituents to run. Instead, Maestas ends up running for a seat that he does not want. He's the only person on the ballot. Candelaria quits in mid-November, and that doesn't stop everything. They, again, tried to get this appointment within several days. This is, to me, self-serving, conniving. Those two seats could have been up for election this month. You know, Senator Candelaria and Representative Mo Maestas pat themselves on the back for being fair and just, helping the little guy, and that's well and good unless it gets in the way, I guess, of your political ambitions. Should we reward that behavior? I don't think so. I'm not going to. This is the kind of thing that people believe really undermines our democracy, and it prevents people from participating in the political process. Here we go again. Last year, over the redistricting process, we're close to a holiday. Now we're in the, we're close to Thanksgiving. This is when all this stuff is going to happen, I guess. And it's just frustrating, I mean, because I'd like to spend my time getting ready for Thanksgiving. It's just not a very convenient time, and I remember the last time we were talking about redistricting, and we had all this discussion, there was a Christmas tree, and I just like, really, I'm very frustrated about that, to be honest, but that's not really it. I just feel like this so undermines our electoral process. It really does, and I think that's what gets people worked up. We have a democratic process. It should have been adhered to. There was an opportunity for other people to run for the seat, for both these seats, actually. And I can't reward that behavior. I just feel very strongly about it. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Any other comment or questions for applicants? Well, I wanted to, oh, go ahead. Yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have two questions. This is a long night, but I'd like to ask each of the applicants. Two of my biggest issues relate to my kids is are there going to be jobs for them that they're going to want to stay here? Because I love them. I want them to be here. I don't want them going somewhere else. So it's a complicated issue, but how would you stimulate the economy, create jobs? And then the other thing is, I don't want them getting killed. So what would you do to address crime? It's a complicated onion to unpeel. I get it, and this isn't a great environment to ask that. And out of fairness to Julie, I asked her via text this answer, so I'm happy to, I thought she gave a good answer, and I'm happy to read it, but I would like to get the other applicants. And I have, in transparency to the audience, I have talked to several candidates about this question, so.
Yeah, that would be great.
But not all the candidates, so please. And Madam Chair, whatever order you'd like.
Yeah, if candidates present could come up in the order they were called, Steve Gaez, Representative Antonio Maestas, we have a text from Julie Reditzovich, and then Dan Serrano, M. Ward, Donald Wood, and Peter Zollinger. Thank you. Appreciate this.
On the crime issue, in Burnley County, I was doing an excellent job along with the city of Albuquerque on working on behavioral health issues. We need to continue to work on that. The fentanyl issue is going to kill our city if we don't watch out. And so my intention is to go up to Santa Fe and to work on those issues specifically and also to work on the mental health issue. I think that the Burnley County and the city are both doing low-level mental health efforts, but they're not getting to the people that are, say, in the mental health center. They're not getting to the people that are really, really sick, and I believe these are the people that are in the tent cities and those kinds of things. The other question was on the economy. How do we improve the economy? Well, we've done a good job by bringing in big businesses with IRBs and those kinds of things, but really, the economic engine for Burnley County is small businesses, and so we need to focus on those small businesses. And I would take that to the legislature and ask them to have an interim committee on that issue, and I would focus on that issue because both the crime and preparation for people to get back into jobs is so important. I know so many business people that just can't staff their businesses right now, so we need to find some ways to get that done, and we need to find some ways to make the small businesses successful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, members. Just, I'll try to be brief, but I chair the House Commerce Committee, which is charged with economic policy for the state of New Mexico, and we have to create markets. We have to create markets for young people, for entrepreneurs to succeed, and I have an economics degree from the University of Washington, and I'm an old Keynesian economic theorist. We have to build out our infrastructure. We have to increase our roads, bridges, airports, things of that nature which spur economic growth. We have to look at other cities and ask what they're doing successfully and do the same. I know that's painful for a lot of folks, we, folks that are well-off or retired or have a good income, they may not have a vested interest in this town growing. But I have a seven-year-old, an eight-year-old, like the Commissioner, and I have a 20-year-old who's not coming back. She's studying at Arizona State. So we must build our economy, no matter how much we romanticize about our current poverty. Secondly, I'm the only former prosecutor in the State House. I prosecuted violent crimes for five years at the Burnley County DA's office. I know those systems. In my private life, I represent a group of Amiki community organizations in the DOJ APD litigation lawsuit. We have to train and recruit and train Albuquerqueans to become cops and to become a new 21st century cop. We need to, we have a chance to reset the DA's office with a new DA, January 1st, rebuild back that relationship with the district court and the metro court, because on Fourth and Lomas, that's where the rubber hits the road. What the state can do is increase salaries and benefit packages for all law enforcement agencies. What I'm going to be also doing is reorganizing the law enforcement academy. We need an ombudsman and a independent oversight of the Department of Corrections so that folks get out ready to succeed and not get out worse than they're in, and we have to confront, and what I commend all of you for doing, is confronting the public health crisis as relates to substance abuse, alcoholism, drug abuse. You know, back in the day, we'd keep all the poor people in drug addicts in jail. Now that's against the law, and we have to deal with these folks when they get out so that they don't recommit crimes and, so it's a kitchen table, a kitchen sink effect for crime and the economy, and I'm without question the most highly suited candidate to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, yes, Dan Serrano. Oh, Julie, sorry, we'll go to Julie Reditzovich first, sorry. And she's on, actually. Julie Reditzovich, please answer Commissioner Benson, Vice Chair Benson's question.
Yes. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to present today. So in crime, I believe we need both-and approach to crime. We need more officers patrolling neighborhoods focusing on violent and repeat offenders and being assisted by social workers for non-violent crimes. We also need to reduce the number of guns on the street. Police know that with more guns, crime happens more readily. We need to keep violent and repeat offenders behind bars, and we desperately need more beds and facilities for addiction and behavioral health, which is driving homelessness and crime. With regard to the economy, I believe we need help, we need to help new entrepreneurs get their start in industries like construction, cannabis, and energy. We need to urge the state to continue to cut the gross receipt tax, one of the state's most regressive taxes. And finally, we need to urge more students to take advantage of debt-free college and vocational school, which may be the most impactful strategy in the long term to boost our economy.
Thank you, Julie Reditzovich. Yes, Mr. Dan Serrano, followed by M. Ward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners. I'll address the economic development. I can tell you first, Dan, I've been in the trenches. It's one of the reasons why I founded the Westside Chamber of Commerce, to be able to help those small businesses not only survive but thrive. And we, you know, the bulk of our gross receipts tax comes from small business, and we need to do everything we can to help them survive. They create jobs sometimes, you know, even through COVID, their job is, their business has been their job. They've had two or not one of the same. So we have our challenges, but what goes hand in hand with economic development is education, because if we can produce an educated, qualified workforce, we're not going to be able to help those businesses have the labor pool that they need. Ms. Radosovich talked about vocational school. I can tell you, as a general contractor, I can't find workers. Nobody wants to go out and grab a shovel or a pick, even though nowadays with the new tools and technology, you don't need to, but sometimes you do. They don't want to be block leaders, they don't want to be framers, you know, they want to make instant money. And maybe that's how we've evolved as a society, but until we can help small businesses, until we can look at how we can provide a qualified, educated workforce and market ourselves and take ourselves from the bottom of every dish that's good and go a little bit north of that, it's a goal. Now, when it comes to crime, I have some issues. I mean, I think I'm probably the only one here of the candidates that can say I've been in the streets defending them. I've worked as a police officer, I've put people in jail, and I come from that background. As I mentioned earlier, my dad was a county sheriff. I wanted to do that. I wanted to protect and serve, kind of what I'm wanting to do now, standing in front of you. But we have a lot of issues, and we can sit there and point the finger at a lot of things, crime, homelessness, addictions, mental health issues, bail reform, I mean, probably something we need to take a look at. There's a lot of different things. The legislature is going to be charged with dealing with a lot of different issues, and I think what's needed to represent our district is someone that has that diverse background to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, M. Ward, followed by Donald Wood.
Is there a time limit to the comments?
Folks have stayed less than two minutes.
Okay, thanks. I almost sound like, feel like I'm going to be a broken record in some respects. To go with crime first, and I think there's kind of a huge interconnection with things, but I think, as previous speakers have said, there's sort of a relationship with crime and violent crime, with substance abuse, and the availability of guns and weapons. And it kind of ties in a little bit with, well, it ties in with creating jobs as well. But in addressing the guns issue, I think we need to look a little more broadly and recognize, especially with the guns and the drugs tied together, and I think there was a recent Journal article about straw purchases, and just like 10 days ago or so, like a week and a half ago, there was a big conference in Mexico City addressing gun trafficking. So it's like the guns from, go from the United States to Mexico, get traded for drugs, and the drugs come back to New Mexico, well, not just New Mexico, but the United States. So that is an issue that ties in with everything. I would like to see us invest in small, locally-owned businesses. Again, small businesses, I think, should be given preference if we're going to make certain kinds of investment decisions. Small businesses keep the profits in the community. They hire local people, give training to local people, okay? But needing the qualified workers, that's an issue. That goes back to the education. And I'm a little bit surprised it hasn't been brought up more in terms of education because usually, bad things get said about educational outcomes in New Mexico, especially when you have, we've had a room full of educators today or this evening. But I think a lot of times we focus on the relative, like how we rate 49th or 50th in a lot of measures, and what's more concerning to me is the absolute. Like only 18, is it 18% are at grade? Like only 18, is it 18% are at grade level for math and 23% or something like that are at grade level for reading? I think we really need to focus on getting the skills to kids. Create an environment that promotes love of learning. And I think, if you can do that early, I think it carries through. But somewhere along the line, apathy sets in. And I think that's a big problem. And I think it may be sort of like the middle school years. One of my former next-door neighbors was a teacher at Jimmy Carter. And he made a comment one time, we were having a discussion, and he said, it's like roughly that age, you know, when it seemed to be like boys would get in trouble for doing something. And it didn't seem like there were, well, these were his words, and I'm paraphrasing, but I, the gist of his point was that it seems like they get thrown away. And I don't know if that's part of the whole pipeline to prison or the, I forgot the buzzword. The school-to-prison pipeline, sorry. And where, you know, maybe if we could provide a broader range of resources at critical ages. Because I think it'd be good to like track, um, the performances. I mean, a lot of things could be said about standardized testing, but, um, where's the drop-off and what's the reason it's happening? So I'm, I don't see any lights buzzing, but I think I should stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Donald Wood, followed by Peter Zollinger.
Once again, thank you. When are we going to stop putting all this on mental health and drugs? When we should start focusing on the neighborhoods, the communities and unite. The neighborhood I live in, we all have a group, we're working with the young kids to find them jobs. If we see them lingering, we're working with them and their parents to, to help them find employment, to keep them out of, off the drugs and off the streets. If we work with the industries that are coming into the west side, work with them and demand that they have programs that hire within the district, we can solve a lot of problems in our own district. But it takes a community, a neighborhood association to get this started, as we do need more officers, but we all understand the process with that. It'll come in time and we hope it comes in time like that. As with guns and stuff like that, I love guns. I'm a concealed weapons carry permit holder. Guns don't kill people, people kill people. I've protected my family with my guns and my neighborhood. So if we can put all this mental health and drug issues to the side and start focusing on the neighborhoods and the communities, we might solve problems. We might solve some issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald Wood. And our, um, last, Peter Zollinger.
Commissioners, well, first on the crime. I disagree with the previous speaker. As to people killing people, you're not really going to solve that until you take the pistols What I would like to see, I doubt very seriously if this is politically possible, but I would like to see no barrel shorter than 18 inches. Now, crime in general, given real human beings as they really are, this will not abate with the people who commit street crimes, commonly called blue-collar crimes, until their economic situation abates. Okay? You ask about the economics, Commissioner Benson. I claim no special knowledge. What I do feel is that there are people in this state who do have it. They will be working for the Lujan Grisham administration. And as I stated before in my opening remarks, uh, give these people a chance. They have the knowledge to help our economic situation in this state, which will help if we do get people into better situations. Will help not only our crime situation, but our general educational sys- situation. These kids who score poorly on these tests pretty much come from family situations where they really can't concentrate on their situation. If the family's economic situation was better, maybe, maybe that would change. So, let's get behind, I realize this is partisan. I'm obviously the most partisan person in the room, given by history. But let's see what our people who know what they're doing in Santa Fe, and they are Democrats, let's see what they could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments for applicants?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Piscotti, I mean, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. Are we going to start to nominate, the nomination process?
Yeah, I will now call for motions to nominate.
I asked to be, um, Madam Chair, if you would please.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Uh, I just want to reiterate that this is my district. Ninety percent of it is in District One. Uh, it's my, uh, honor to nominate, um, Julie Ridditovich. I, uh, actually recently met her, relatively recently. Um, I met her through, um, Commissioner-elect Barbo, uh, Barbara Baca. I have been so impressed with her experience, her knowledge, the work she has done. Someone mentioned that she would be sort of a fresh, uh, start to, to, to serve this district. And I have to agree, she's not a political insider. But her experience as an educator, I think, is a super key. Uh, we are, as was mentioned, that, you know, we're about to, uh, open up the coffers for education and the voters, the voters decided that, to support that constitutional amendment. Um, and so, and I was one of them. And when I'm glad that it came before us for a vote, because that was the right thing to do. And, uh, I think it's going to be important to have someone of, of her experience as an educator, uh, looking at what our educational needs are and what our educational future is all about. So I, um, I think that's great. I also wanted to, she, she mentioned that she had, it looked like over a hundred and hundred people in the community, um, putting letters of support. And, um, there were some that were in her district and there were some who were not. And that's true for all the candidates. Some people in the district and some were not. But I do want to make the list of elected officials, which I think is really important. Senator Linda Lopez, Patricia Roible-Caviero, she is the state representative. Senator Anton, uh, Antonet Zedio-Lopez. Senator Harold Pope, who's the Senate Majority Caucus Chair. Uh, Representative Eleanor Chavez. Senator Bill Soules. Former Senator DeeDee Feldman. G- Glenn White was the Vice Chair of the Public Education Commission. Yolanda Montoya-Cordova, who was the President of APS Board of Education. Melissa Armijo, which is the Public Education Commissioner for District One. Alan Brower is running, uh, he's the Public Commissioner for District Three, he's running unimposed. Senator, State Senator Jerry T.C. Pino. Senator Bill Tallman. Candelaria, former APS Board Member, uh, and, uh, Candelaria, Candy Patterson, many of us know her. And of course, Br- uh, Bernal County Commissioner-elect Barbara Baca. So I would like to nominate.
I'll second that. And, uh, thanks for coming. I'd also like to nominate Steve Gallegos. Um, we heard from Mr. Gallegos, who I met for the first time at a Fentanyl Summit that the county held. I, um, I met him there, but I'd heard a lot about him because of his previous work as a former county commissioner. So I'd already heard about him, was pleased to see him on his own accord at that Fentanyl Summit. Um, I think it is important that he has over 20 years across state, city, county government, um, so knows the work, could hit the ground running. Uh, during my own path for public service, I was, um, there was an appointment option as well. Um, and, um, the governor at that time decided to, um, leave it up to the voters and appoint someone who would agree not to run again. So I was able to talk to Mr. Um, Gallegos and his interests are to get in, try and get some things done, um, use his experience to really be able to do, do that kind of service, um, in a short notice and that he would not run for this seat, leaving it up to the voters of the district to be able to make this decision. So I'd like to submit my nomination for, uh, Steve Gallegos.
Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, I really just wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, um, okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment that in all the emails that we've gotten, nobody has said anything bad about Mo Maestis and, um, except that his wife is a lobbyist and Madam Chair Barbo is a lobbyist, but that doesn't make her a bad person. So, um, I just wanted to, to mention that, that, you know, um, I haven't heard anything bad. And if I just lined up all the resumes, I would say that Representative Maestis probably has the best resume and the best experience for this job. I, uh, he also, um, I know you're talking about numbers of emails we've gotten, but, um, Mr. Maestis did get 100% of the vote in his last election, which was over 7,500 votes. So, um, I think that, that speaks a lot. I did call every applicant, I didn't get ahold of every applicant. Um, one applicant who's here today didn't have a voicemail box set up yet, so, um, I, I'm sorry I didn't get to speak with everybody. Um, I, I did want to say something. Julie Ridosovich, I did call you today. Um, I didn't hear back from you. There, there was something in the email that you sent that was reply all that I don't think you intended it to go to the commissioners, but there was something in that email that I, um, found questionable and I wanted to talk with you personally about that. So I won't mention it here, um, but I, um, I'll be supporting Mo Maestis and I'm not making a nomination. I think that because it's Commissioner Casada, he shares that district, I'll defer to him. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, I would like to nominate Representative Mo Maestis for this position. I think his resume speaks for itself. I think his dedication to the community speaks for itself. Uh, I'm going to say that, uh, everybody who has submitted their resume is very impressive. I've said this a bunch of times. Um, this does not stop the, the political process. This does not stop people from running for office. This does not stop people from getting their vote in. To put conspiracy theories forward sounds a lot like mega to me, uh, but at the end of the day, yeah, you can roll your eyes, that's okay. The whole world saw that.
That's fine.
But, um, but, um, but, but that's the truth, right? You, you have no facts, uh, to base your conspiracy theories. I think this wasn't the place to have that conversation, but since you brought it up, um, this is not the place. We're here to appoint, that's our job, and we're here to look for the best possible candidate to, uh, fill that position. And in two years, the voters will have their say-so, whether they think that we did the right job or not. And I'm hoping that, uh, all the other candidates who have submitted their names, uh, if they're truly serious about representing their district, that I'm looking forward to seeing their campaign, uh, coming up in two years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Casada.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to nominate M. Ward. Um, I did get some, actually, really nice emails, um, on your behalf, so I would like to put that nomination out.
I'd second that.
I want to second, uh, Commissioner Casada's nomination.
Oh, thank you. Second for Commissioner Casada, Representative Maestis, and I second M. Ward. I received a lot of, um, emails and positive and from my district specifically in support of M as well.
I just would finally like to, I mean, we had a number of folks who, as was mentioned, very qualified and so, um, I'd also like to nominate, uh, Dan Serrano.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other conversations? Awesome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Piscotti.
Just in, um, in honor of all your service, Pete Zollinger, I'd like to nominate you.
Thank you.
And you, I have no conflict of interest with you because the first time I ran, every time I saw you, you would tell me, you're going to lose. And I'm like, not listening to you, Pete Zollinger. And then on election night, you were like.
This last time, aren't we?
We're not going there, but on election night in 2018, you were like, I think you're winning. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to also just make a comment to, um, so I did, Mr. Steve Gallegos, I nominated him. Also just to note that I was, um, privileged to work with, um, Julie Ridditovich when she was principal of South Valley Academy and I got to see her in her, um, most, you know, grittiness of creating a school. And I remember then it was these, um, barracks mostly, not that pretty of a campus. And, um, everyone, I encourage you to go check out South Valley Academy, it's beautiful campus with, you could just feel, it feels so warm. And, um, at the time, I used to work at a, for community corrections for adjudicated youth. And so a lot of the youth that I worked with at YDI would, um, get accepted to be at South Valley Academy and I can't tell you how much success they had under that school and of course, to all the teachers and staff that worked there to make that a wonderful school. Um, and last I'd say, yes, I've, um, as it was mentioned, that I am a registered lobbyist. I work for a nonprofit that has more recently gotten its C-Force status and I've worked with Representative Mo Maestis and Senator Candelaria and others to do things such as repeal the, um, 1969, um, ban on abortion. We've been able to secure healthcare affordability fund that brings in millions of dollars of recurring money for healthcare for New Mexico. So I don't work as a lobbyist with, um, corporations or businesses. I get to work for a nonprofit and, um, lead issues by the people. So, um, there's a bit of a difference, I just wanted to clear that since it was mentioned. And, um, yes, I think we'll move on if there's any other nominations. All right, we'll go to, um, Reps-, um, the first nomination was for Ms. Julie Ridditovich. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Piscotti?
No.
Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson?
No, but I do want to say, uh, Julia, I've been very impressed with, uh, your resume and, uh, the couple of conversations we've had. And, um, I'll look forward to seeing you some more.
Madam Chair Barboa?
Yes. Thank you. That nomination passed. Um, next we'll move to, did not pass, sorry. Sorry, to clarify, that nomination did not pass. Um, now we'll move on to Mr. Steve Gallegos. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Piscotti?
No.
Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Benson?
No. I don't want to thank you, Steve, for throwing your hat in the ring. I'll, I'll say this for every candidate, so, um, thank you for everything you've done before and soon to be.
Madam Chair Barboa?
Yes. That nomination passed. On to Antonio, Representative Antonio Maestis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
No.
Vice Chair Benson?
Yes.
Madam Chair Barboa?
No. Thank you. That passes. Representative Maestis has the votes needed to get the seat for Senate District 26. So after we adjourn, we will meet with staff about the swearing-in process and how to best handle that with Representative Maestis. I want to thank every member of the public that came both in person and on Zoom to participate in both tonight's regular meeting and the appointment for Senate Districts 26. We've received hundreds of emails about this, and public participation is crucial part of a healthy democracy. I encourage our constituents and neighbors to continue engaging with your county commission.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, and I too want to thank all of the applicants and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you all.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, and if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Madam Chair, question, please?
You can come up and approach me if you'd like.